Okay, good evening to everyone. Today's date is June 15, 2020. This is Monday night, City Council meeting, New London, Connecticut. City Clerk Ayala, could you please do the roll call?
President Dominguez.
Present.
President Protemnartartes.
Present.
Counselor Dice.
Here.
Counselor Goodwin.
Present.
Counselor Booker Jr.
Present.
Counselor Burke.
Present.
Counselor Sadai.
Present.
All present.
Thank you, sir. Let me just welcome everyone that is tuning in or either by phone or by Zoom. Also want to thank the mayor, Director McBride, Tony Landrigan, and everyone else that is present at this moment. Let me just really quickly read the logistics here. Due to the ongoing national and state public health emergency caused by global coronavirus pandemic, City of New London Public Meetings will be held virtually. Meeting agendas can be found at www-new-londonct.org. An audio recording of this meeting will be posted on the city website within seven days of the meeting. Public comment may be submitted in writing. J starts at newlondonct.org. If you prefer, you may sign up to speak at the following link on the City of New London website, newlondonct.org/live-stream. This thing will be, will bring you to a fillable form, or you may submit your name, and you'll be added to the public comment list and called on via Zoom during the public comment portion of the meeting. Public comment must be submitted in writing, or your name submitted on the fillable sign up form on the city website at least 15 minutes prior to the scheduled start of the meeting. And with that said, I want to allow Counselor Kevin Booker Jr. to begin with the prayer and pledge.
Thank you very much, President Dominguez. Please join me in prayer this evening. Heavenly Father, thank you for blessing us with another day and waking us up this morning. Thank you for giving us wisdom and knowledge, and for protecting our loved ones. Thank you for the peace and hope you bring to each of, each of us. Tonight, please guide the City Council and all participants in this meeting in placing our hearts in a place to make decisions that will lead the City of New London in a positive direction. We open our minds to make choices together that allow all of our residents to feel unified, safe, supported, and at peace within this community. We love and appreciate you, Lord. Amen.
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 Please join me in a moment of silence for 30 seconds for the racial injustice and Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Some of you can see the mayor's flag, or you can see my flag, okay? If some of you can turn on your screens, that would be great, as we stand and keep your screens on muted, okay? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic... ...for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. President Dominguez, can you recite the Pledge of Allegiance in Spanish, please?
Yes, sir. Prometo lealtad a la bandera de los Estados Unidos de América, a la República que representa una nación ante Dios, indivisible, con libertad y justicia para todos. Thank you, Counselor Booker. Let me just put my little headsets on. Can you guys still hear me? Yes? Okay, great, great, thank you. All right, at this time, let me just make an announcement really quick. Just another thing very important for me to do is that the purpose of this meeting is the City Council agenda for this evening. We have set apart a special council meeting that will deal with the permanent removal of the Columbo statue. That's tomorrow at 7:00 PM. Excuse me, no, tomorrow at 6:00 PM. Obviously, if you're here for that, that's fine, you can comment on it, you have, you have the right to do it today, and then tomorrow, but we're going to be dealing with that tomorrow. And I, and I want it that way because I believe it's very important, it's, it's something that deserves its own meeting, and for us to hear both sides of the argument here. So with that said, I also want to make sure that everyone that's speaking tonight, if you're participating through Zoom, at least to have your video camera on so that at least we can, we can see who's talking. I just don't want any issues that plagued other meetings in the past. We, I think we have to be respectful, the way we speak and what we say in our meetings, and I think everybody deserves that, no matter, no matter your race, or your color, whatever, you need to be respectful. With that said, if you're calling on by phone, make sure you have star nine, okay? That's important also. Okay? All right, with that said, then I'm going to move on to public hearings, all right? So public hearings, I already announced that tomorrow, there will be, well, there'll be a special council meeting tomorrow, so there's no public hearings. Minutes of previous meeting. Before I go to that, I want to, I want to call on Counselor Burke, please. Can you add that motion to our agenda?
Yes, thank you, President Dominguez. This is Counselor Burke, and I would like to make a motion to add a cam to tonight's agenda. Language is the following. The City Council hereby approves the extension of the contract for paving services by J.H. Lynch Company in the amount of $250,000 for the calendar year ending December 31, 2020. The original contract was signed in 2018 and allowed renewal of the bid price if mutually agreed by the City and J.H. Lynch. The City Council hereby authorizes the mayor to sign and execute the extended contract.
This is President Dominguez speaking. Thank you, Counselor Burke. Can I have a second? Go ahead, sir.
A second by Counselor?
Thank you, it's been seconded by Counselor Booker. Okay, let's vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, and those opposed saying, okay, so we have added that, and that will be item 8.6. Item 8.6 on our, on tonight's agenda. All right, 4.0 minutes, minutes of previous meetings. All right, I need a motion to accept these, receive them, omissions, or any items for that. Counselor Sadie, can you begin with the first one, please?
Counselor Sadie would like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of the public hearing dated May 18, 2020.
President Dominguez speaking, can I, President Protemnartartes, can you second
Second.
Okay, any discussion, it's been seconded, any discussion? Okay, see none, let's vote. All those in favor, say aye, or raise your hand.
Aye.
All right, okay, the motion carries. All right, the next one, I need a motion for that one. Counselor Goodwin, the special meeting.
I'll, I'll take it, yeah, I'll move the special meeting of May 27, 2020.
Can I have a second?
Counselor Dice, second it.
Thank you, it's been seconded by Counselor Dice. Any discussion? Okay, see none, let's vote. All those in favor, raise your hands, or say aye.
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 All right, any opposed? All right, the motion carries, all right. The next one, Counselor Kevin Booker Jr., can you read that one? Motion for the special meeting of June 1st.
Special meeting on June 1st?
This is President Dominguez, I'm sorry, guys, I, I don't know if you guys have the agenda in front of you, I'm sorry. So you know what I'm going to do, I'm going to have, I'm, I'm going to have Counselor Alma, President Protemnartartes, go ahead, do the following ones.
Yeah, so, so, so I'll move special meeting of June 1, 2020, and you second.
Approval of minutes.
Okay, and you want to call for a vote?
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye. Okay, the motion carries.
Counsel, Counsel President Dominguez, like to make a motion that the City Council approve the minutes of the public hearing dated June 1, 2020.
Second, President Protemnartartes.
Thank you, it's been seconded by President Protemnartartes. Any discussion? Okay, see none, let's vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Raise your hand.
Okay, all right, all those opposed, see none, okay, the motion carries.
Counsel President Dominguez, I would like to make a motion that the City Council approve the minutes of regular meeting dated June 1, 2020.
Second, President Protemnartartes.
Thank you, it's been seconded by President Protemnartartes. Any discussion? Okay, see none, all right, let's vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Raise your hand. All right, any opposed? All right, the motion carries, okay, great. All right, so now we've come to the part of public comment. Again, just to make sure you have three minutes, you have to state your name, okay, and your address, and you have three minutes, three minutes allocated for you to speak at tonight's meeting. Also make sure that... Let me just look at the list first. All right, so the first speaker is Dan Onofrio. Sir, you're on. And City Clerk Ayala will let you know when there's a one-minute warning so you can start closing on your, on your speech.
Great, thank you, Councilman, I appreciate it. I appreciate your time this evening. Dan Onofrio, I'm a Shelton resident at 50 Rolling Brook Lane in Shelton, and I didn't realize you guys were going to have a special meeting tomorrow, which I'm happy to hear. I'll try to make myself available for that as well, but I'll be short and brief here tonight, I just have a few comments. I'm the proud president of the Connecticut Grand Lodge of the Sons and Daughters of Italy and America. For those of you who don't, or are not familiar with the Sons and Daughters of Italy, we are the largest and oldest organization representing Italian-American men and women in the country. In fact, we have 10 lodges here in Connecticut. I'm not here this evening to debate or provide a history lesson on Christopher Columbus, I think we're all capable of doing our own research on that, but I'm here really representing the thousands of Italians and Italian-Americans that live in Connecticut, and frankly, just the outrage that I've been hearing on what's happening with, within our communities throughout the United States, and specifically here in New London. I'm not sure if you're familiar, but nearly 19% of Connecticut residents identify themselves as Italian or of being of Italian descent, I'm not sure if you knew that. And that's frankly why I'm calling, I'm on this call this evening, I'm a first-generation Italian-American. My parents were eight months pregnant with me when they moved here 47 years ago, and for my parents and the many millions of immigrants that came to this country throughout the late 1800s and throughout the turn of the century, Columbus was not only the Admiral of the Sea, as he's often referred to, but a beacon of hope for, a chance for making a better life for the, my parents, as well as the families that came over before them. So you just have to look at the history books to see that, that they endured quite a bit to assimilate to life here in America, so much so that they were deemed an ethnic group with federal minority status. Again, not sure if people realize that. When I think of America, I think of the United States, I think of it as a giant quilt, right? Each patch on the quilt represents the beautiful diversity that this country represents, whether you're black, brown, white, regardless of religious beliefs and ancestral history, and that, to me, is what makes America great. So when we see these attacks on Columbus, and the statues throughout the country, it's, for us, it's nothing short of an attack on, on the Italian-American community directly. Furthermore, I find it hard to see, you know, the video footage, photographs of people defacing these statues, and, and really nothing being done about it. You know, last I recall vandalism on public property was a crime, and it should be treated as such. So I can't help but think of those families, the Italian-American families that have contributed to, to the statue that was donated to New London in 1928. I can't help but think of the pride they must have felt on that day when it was erected, and, and as a genuine token of thanks to the City of New London for welcoming, welcoming them to this great community that you have in New London, and, and now it's just 100 years, not even 100 years later, you know, we're going to go to bed at night saying, "Thanks, but no thanks," something to me that, that just doesn't feel right. I understand, and I genuinely empathize with the underlying message of all these attacks, I get it, but if we're truly trying to move towards a more inclusive community, one where all people are treated, treated equally, then I'll be the first person there at the table to listen, to learn, find a way forward together, and truly Italian-style, we want to be part of the solution, we want to help. So I'm sure we're all familiar with the Golden Rule, right? Growing up in an Italian home, it was impossible, it was impossible for, for me and my sisters to, to escape that Golden Rule, and God forbid if we were caught by our parents treating other people with disrespect, and not in a dignified manner. So that's what we're asking for tonight, an opportunity to be part of the solution, doesn't have to come to finger-pointing and rioting and defacing public property, I don't think any of those actions end well anyway, and are not productive. So we just have to look to the City of Boston and Garfield, New Jersey, where city officials and leaders in the community are, are coming together, and they're working towards, try to find a common solution for all, for the appropriate public setting for their Columbus statues and monuments. So I'm asking the members of the City Council, regardless of your beliefs in the historical facts of Columbus, just to consider opening up a productive dialogue with the appropriate stakeholders so that we can return Columbus to an appropriate public setting in New London. From my perspective, two wrongs do not make a right, so let's just...
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Onofrio, for your time tonight, appreciate it. At this time, I'm going to be calling on Jerry DeSantis.
Hello, hello, hi, I'm Jerry DeSantis, 33 Spring Street in New London, and I did sign up because I too wanted to address the statue, but I think I'll do that tomorrow night, I'll sign up to speak then, but I did have another issue that I wanted to call to your attention. I find that when I call certain departments in New London, it can be scary, just the manner in which people answer the phone, you know, some of the people sound very stressed out, you know, not at Public Works, whoever answers the phone over there has phone etiquette down, it's very nice. If you do, you know, call the police department sometimes just for an inquiry, some of the dispatchers just seem like really stressed out, and, you know, I think since we're trying to, you know, create a new New London, I think that should be addressed, you know, just like phone etiquette, how to, how to answer the phone, you know, that's our biggest PR right there, "Welcome to New London, this is how we treat people that are calling for information." I, I think we really need to investigate that and put a really strong image forward. The second thing I do want to address, you know, the vandalization of Christopher Columbus, I think people did get, you know, into the heat of the moment, I can understand that. I was young at one time, and I know, like, a youth group was involved in that, maybe instead of, you know, going the, the route where people are going to be fined or in trouble with the law, maybe we could just kind of restorative justice, and really, you know, take it as a learning situation for the young people, and, you know, they could, they could give back to their city. There's some parts in New London that could, could really, really use some cleaning up, so let's, you know, make that a learning situation for them. I know that there's pictures, people could be readily identified, a lot of people who just got caught up, I don't think...
One minute.
And I think, I think we should investigate a creative way to resolve that. I concede my time, thank you very much.
Thank you, this is President Dominguez speaking, thank you, Ms. DeSantis, for your words tonight. At this time, I'm going to be calling on Jen Taylor. Is there a Jen Taylor on tonight? Not sure if they are.
I don't see one.
No, I don't see it either. They did sign up. Okay, then we'll move on. The next one person for public comment is Karen Paul. She's by phone. Daniel, just in case.
You are... Thank you, counselors, chair, and city staff, Karen Paul, 81 State Street. First, let me thank Counselor Booker for getting myself and the Senior Affairs Commission involved in the helping, deliver meals from the Wailers, Helping Wailers Meal Program. We've delivered to a number of seniors in the city. This program is the program that Chef Tom from the high school and Ginny Milstein are involved in. So I shout out and give a huge thank you from our seniors to that program. Now, I have a question. First, I believe and support free speech, and I think that along with free speech comes listening, listening to other opinions and respecting their right to share their ideas and opinions. My question is, do you, and I don't specifically mean you, Counsel, I mean you, everybody, I do not believe in destroying others' property, whether it be personal or civic property. If in fact you want to destroy or decorate without the consent of the owner, then you are not respecting their rights, ideas, and opinions of others. Free speech, peaceful protest are all part of a bigger picture. Respecting the rights of others, you want my respect, show me yours. Not listening breeds resentment. Spray painting a statue is vandalism, plain and simple. Destroying public property is vandalism, plain and simple. So my questions to those who participate, are those who are responsible proud of themselves?
One minute.
Enough to step forward and own up to their display of vandalism? And are they going to pay from the pocket that took the money for those cans of spray paint, for the removal of, and in this specific case, for the removal of the statue? Are they going to pay the $10,000 to $14,000 the mayor has said it will cost? If you really and truly believe you are right, then stand up and pay for it. Thank you, Counsel, I really miss you guys, and I look forward to seeing you in person. Thank you.
This is President Dominguez speaking, thank you, Ms. Karen Paul, we miss you too. Thank you for your words tonight. With that said, I think that was my last one. Oh, wait a second, I'm sorry, one more, is Kat Goulard, Kat Goulard, is she on?
Yes, I am on...
Go ahead, Kat Goulard.
Thank you, Kat Goulard, 54 Dow Street. Sorry, I'm so casual, you've got the turn-on-your-camera rule, and I'm down here at the beach with my nephews tonight, so I was hoping to, hoping to cheat that a little bit. I wanted to, I was on the admin meeting last, I wanted to just add some comments about Shanice Austin's Economic Development Commission application. I've been watching her for a number of months and her participation on the, any number of meetings, really, all the meetings, I think she would be a fantastic addition. I am one of the commissioners on the Economic Development Commission, we're down to four members now, I believe. We are in, not only are we in need of members, but we're in need of members who care about the city and care about its economic development in the way that Shanice does, so I think that she would be a fantastic, fantastic addition to the commission. So, you know, I didn't anticipate any pushback, excuse me, on her application, but I would encourage you all to, you know, to please, you know, vote yes on that and put that through, I think she would be amazing, and I welcome her to the commission once that's approved. The other comment I'd like to add is, again, my objection from the last meeting would be regarding the, the changes, or continual changes to the agenda. I know you can do it, and I know that Counselor Burke is going to come on and respond to me and say that it's within your purview and it's legally allowable per Robert's Rules, I get that, however, it is really, really difficult with this style of meeting for us to keep up, and by us, I mean, you know, members of the general public, to keep up with changes to City Council agendas when you're just verbally stating them. And there's a really big one that you made tonight, $250,000 contract to a city paver. We don't know what the backup is on that, we don't know if that has been put out to bid, I mean, you know, putting city contracts out to bid is something that has been a bit of an issue, I guess, to, you know, to put it sort of mildly, again and again, with city contracts. I, I, I know you're not going to, but I'm going to ask you to please table that issue to another council meeting so that the residents and the taxpayers, the folks whose $250,000 that is, in addition to just yours, have a chance to look at that and weigh in on that and see what that is.
One minute.
We can give you our comment on that.
One minute.
It is, again, thank you, it is, again, really, really difficult for us to have a chance to weigh in on agenda items when you add it on 30 seconds before the meeting starts, or during, you know, when the meeting is started. So that said, please approve Ms. Austin's application, I'm excited to start working with her on the EDC, and also, please stop adding agenda items at the last minute because it's really frustrating, we need to be able to do our due diligence and review those in the same way that you can. So thank you very much, and...
All right, this is, this is President Dominguez speaking, thank you, Ms. Goulard, for your words tonight also. At this time, there is no other person that has signed up. We will move on to petitions. Any petitions? There is none, and now we will proceed to response to public comment. I will start with Counselor Sadie, response to public comment, do you have any?
I do. Thank you very much, Counsel President Dominguez, thank you very much to Dan Onofrio, the State President of the Sons of Italy, for coming today. I would like to respond to some of his comments about Columbus and about the racial discrimination, or the ethnic discrimination that's going on in this city right now against Italian-Americans. Christopher Columbus is one of our heroes. Fiction, Columbus did not discover America, fact, in every significant way he did, even if others visited the continent sporadically before he did, their voyages had no historical significance. Columbus's voyages, however, marked the end of thousands of years of isolation between the Western Hemisphere and the rest of the world. The recorded history of the Americans in the Caribbean start with Columbus. Fiction, Columbus was a slave trader, fact, Columbus never owned any slaves or brought any to the Western Hemisphere from Africa. On his return to Hispaniola in November 1493, he learned that all of his men had been massacred by the Taino Indians, excuse me, by the Taino tribe. Columbus and his men fought these Indians, capturing about 2,000, and in 1495, sent 500 of these prisoners, prisoners of war, to Spain to be sold as slaves, as was the custom in the 15th century of Europe. Fiction, Columbus was a racist. Evidence, no evidence indicates that Columbus thought the islanders he met were racially inferior in any way. Fiction, Columbus committed genocide. Fact, Columbus made four journeys... Fact. Columbus made four journeys to the Caribbean in a 12-year period, 1492 to 1504, spending from only seven months to two years and nine months. It is inconceivable that he would have killed millions of people in so short a time. In fact, most of the native population perished because of lack of immunity to such diseases that they caught from the Spanish explorers. Fiction. Columbus destroyed the balance between man and nature. Fact. Columbus and other Europeans brought with them old-world agricultural techniques, including crop rotation and animal breeding. They also introduced new tools, including the wheel, as well as new plants and domesticated animals, including horses. Fiction. Columbus stole native land. Fact. A sad fact of human civilization is that powerful nations usurped the land of the vanquished. The Spanish conquistadors, who followed Columbus in the 16th and 17th century, were establishing an empire through military conquest. More facts. Columbus proved that it was possible to safely cross the Atlantic Ocean. Please remember that prior to Columbus, most people in this great world thought that the world was flat and that we would fall off. Columbus proved that wrong. Columbus founded the first permanent European settlement in the Western Hemisphere, Hispaniola, now known as the Dominican Republic and Haiti. Columbus was the first to open relations between Europe and the Western Hemisphere. His voyages marked the beginning of more than 500 years of culture, economic, and political relations between Europe and America. Columbus was the first European to realize the full importance of the Atlantic wind pattern called prevailing westerlies, which blew steadily west to east. Columbus's transatlantic route laid the foundation for future navigations in this region. His maps were used by Americo Vespucci. The route across the Atlantic Ocean that Columbus charted in the 15th century is still used by sailors today. Columbus introduced the principle of compass variation, the variation of point between the Earth's center and the magnetic north. Columbus Day recognizes the achievement of the great Renaissance explorer who founded the first permanent European settlement in the New World. The arrival of Columbus in 1492 marks the beginning of the recorded history in America and open relations between America and the rest of the world. Columbus Day celebrates the beginning of a cultural exchange between America and Europe. After Columbus, millions of European immigrants brought their art, music, science, medicine, philosophy, and religious principles. Columbus Day is one of the oldest celebrated holidays in America. On October 12, 1928, there was an unveiling and dedication of the Columbus Monument, presented by the Italian residents of the City of New London, Connecticut, on the 436th anniversary of the discovery of the Americas. I have a brochure here that at some point I will share, but I do not plan to share it all this evening because it's very long. Okay, but honorary members in 1928 was my grandfather, Dr. Charles John Sadi. And there were many others, hundreds, if not thousands, of Italian-Americans who took pride and paid to have that monument brought to this great city in honor of this great man. Now, I am not going to dispute the fact, okay, as people have said recently, that he also did some hideous things. But as people have also mentioned recently, our last president, who I greatly respect, okay, ordered the assassination of Saddam Hussein. Okay, there are many people that have died in wars, not only-
Point of order, point of order, President Dominguez. This is in response to public comment. With all due respect, Councilor Sadi, we do have a special meeting tomorrow. I think this is not appropriate, as according to Robert's Rules, to deviate from the agenda.
Thank you, President Protemna Tatis. I will have to acknowledge that, Councilor Sadi. That's why we have that special council meeting tomorrow.
I would hope then, President Dominguez, that at that point in time, you allow me to finish.
No, no, yes, sir. Yes, sir. I just, you know what? I wasn't letting you finish, but I know that-
But I respect those other councillors. I respect them. Okay, and I could tell you right now, okay, that if there were people in this community that were writing racial epitaphs or spray painting things on our high schools, okay, they would be called hate crimes. And this community, okay, would be asking to have those people arrested.
Point of order, Council President, point of order. If we could revisit President Protem's claims of point of order, I think it would be most appropriate at this point.
I will stop my comments at this point in time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Councilor Sadi, you know that you're going to have that time tomorrow. You know that you'll have that time. You will. You will have that time. That's the reason. We're not going to make this a divisive issue tonight. You know that we are going to allow, that's why, even though the statue was removed, we are going to have that special council meeting to hear both sides. All right, we want to be fair to everyone, okay? Thank you, President Protemna Tatis, and also Councilor Goodwin. And just to make it clear, everyone that sent comments about the statue, those were held, and they will be read tomorrow. We'll do that tomorrow. This is not the special council meeting to discuss that today. We're giving that a day, and that's tomorrow at 6:00 PM. You can join us, and we can talk about it tomorrow and discuss it. All right, with that said, okay, let's go to the next one. Councilor Dice.
Thank you. This is Councilor Dice. And so I just want to address a few things. First of all, Kat Goulard, yes, the, I, I think the people stepping up, our outstanding people for the committee, and I'm looking forward to seeing yes, and when we bring it to the full council. With Karen Paul shared about Whalers Helping Whalers, I know my family benefits greatly about it. So I want to make sure that we do not lose focus about what is the concern. Not only, and the main concern is the fact that many of our children saw someone being killed right before their eyes. And we need to realize that this is why all this stuff came about. But I do know that, I understand, um, why, I understand that everyone has the right and should have the right to express how they feel. And so I'm putting this out here. Next Tuesday at the Hygienic Art Park, 5:00 to 7:00 PM. Everyone can come. Not everyone can come. I have a limited list. But anyway, more information going out because people need to talk about what's going on. And I feel because we didn't communicate, that's why all this escalated. Because this town is too small. We all know each other. We all go to school with each other. Guys, we know each other. I just want to put that out there because as a parent, as a director, and as a councillor, I'm concerned. I do not want to see our community fighting like this. We need to respect each other and our heritage. Putting it out there. But we also need to realize that we are all hurting, and we're showing it in different ways. And that's the main thing. All of us are hurt. Thank you, Councilor Dice. It doesn't, Councilor Dice, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Dice. This is President Dominguez speaking. Councilor Goodwin, in response to public comment for tonight.
Thank you, Council President. Just want to say thank you to the administration committee who held a meeting with Shanice Austin and Karen Paul, who have stepped up to be on committees. What else was there? Sorry, I lost my train of thought. I won't take up too much time, as tomorrow, as you stated, is for the removal of Christopher Columbus statue. But unfortunately, well, fortunately, folks have come out to speak out today, so I will very quickly address it and move on. Councilor Sadi, with no disrespect to you, I really appreciate you making sure we hear both sides of the story. As someone who is of mixed race and as someone whose parents or grandparents grew up on reservations, I am also a black city councillor here in the City of New London. I taught culture for six years at the museum. Some of those things that you state on record, I would love to see that, and I believe I have it. I've shared it with colleagues and archaeologists, and I would dispute lots of what's in there to not be facts, so I don't want to mislead the public. I will note that to some, mainly of Italian heritage, Christopher Columbus was the person that you guys speak of, and I'm very sensitive to your culture. I'm very sensitive to opening up the floor for that.
Point of order, Councilor President Dominguez, are we responding to public comment or responding to council comment?
Well, he's responded. Well, let me just, hold on, guys, hold on. This is, see, this is the issue, okay? President Dominguez speaking. I know that people came tonight to respond, to talk about the statue. Okay, the removal of the statue. Okay, I understand that. This was posted last week. If I'm not mistaken, it was on Friday or Thursday, so it was out there again. I would rather not discuss anything with the statue. I know that we had Mr. Norfield came about and others that came about. I'd rather leave that discussion until tomorrow. It's an important discussion. I just don't want to go back and forth.
The point of order is that, see, as response to public comment, I am not a member of a public. I am a sitting city councillor.
Well, this is the thing. In order, yeah, Councilor Sadi, hold on, give me a moment. This is President Dominguez. To make it fair, see, if I wanted to be fair, you had a lot of time. You discussed a lot of things. And you read, you read almost for two or three or four minutes, you know what I mean? So now you want me to tell Councilor Goodwin to not say anything?
He can, he can speak whatever he wants. I'm just asking him not to debate with me.
Council President, with all due respect-
He's not debating. He just, he-
With all due respect, so I can finish my public comment, so we can continue on. Councilor Sadi, you, I will respect what you are stating. I just ask that, moving forward, that we reserve the right to have that conversation tomorrow. I also echo what Council President said. You took more than enough time to address more than what was specified and the time allowed it for public comment. So in all due respect to folks that may not be on tomorrow's call but heard today's call, I will remind you that this is a taped event that will replay. It is completely unfair for you to think that no one will respond to the door that you opened. If you're going to use Robert's Rules, let's make sure we use it correctly and efficiently. This is a tough matter for myself, for all of us included. But one thing that I am is very respectful of yourself, every other council member, every single person, including Mr. Dan, who came in here today. And I'm more than willing to hear both sides. But I just ask you, when it comes to things like this, have a little bit more respect for your fellow councillors, and let's act with integrity. That is all I have to say for public comment. I look forward to engaging in more conversation with my councillors, as well as the residents and the guests that are on the call. Thank you.
Thank you. This is President Dominguez speaking. Thank you, Councilor Goodwin. Just again, just to make sure, let me just say just a couple of things real quick, and then move on to the next one, which will be you, Councilor Burke. But give me some time here, real quick. Just want to make sure that tomorrow's special council meeting is to listen to the constituents and everyone that's going to be on that meeting. That's mainly it. Okay, we're going to be listening, taking into consideration both sides, and we are going to be listening. And that's what I want everyone to keep their focus on. We're listening, learning, okay, taking it in, and then eventually we can make decisions on that. So that's, that's very important in a discussion, that we listen. So that goes to the councillors. We're going to be listening. We want to listen to everyone. Yes.
President Dominguez, I'm sorry to interrupt.
I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry, Ms. Austin. It's, it's, this is not allowed. You can't, you can't. At this time, I'm sorry. Not from, only from councillors right now. All right, so, so I want to move on, and from now on, if you're the councillor, I'd rather you not discuss anything with the statue tonight. That's what I, as the president of this council, that's what I would like for you to do. Thank you. With that said, I will continue with Councilor Burke.
Thank you very much, President Dominguez. With that, I will certainly honor your request. And at that point, I will thank you for coming tonight, Dan, and look forward to responding to some of your concerns tomorrow evening. If you are able to make it then, I'd love to have you continue to provide your perspective on this very contentious topic, which I will not discuss right now. So I'll just go straight to Kat Goulard. In terms of, you know, stop adding things to the agenda, I just want to empathize because I agree. You know, with this one in particular, it was as Chair of the Public Works Committee. It was my understanding that this was slated to be put on the agenda. And then I was surprised to see that it was not. I would be empathetic to your, I am empathetic to, you know, your concerns about, you know, not having it be more difficult to vet. However, it's, we're halfway through June, and the construction season is only so long. And I'm sure that many residents around their communities would like to, you know, see some asphalt put down to, you know, make our streets more safe to drive on. So I hear your concerns, and if it wasn't so time-sensitive to the construction season, I think your request would be appropriate. But in order to move forward and get some roads paved as quickly as possible, I do plan on supporting that this evening. And as mentioned, all other responses that I have would sort of be touching that third rail that we'll get into tomorrow evening, so I have nothing further at this time. Thank you very much, President Dominguez.
President Dominguez speaking. Thank you so much, Councilor Burke, for honoring my words and my directions. All right, with that said, let's go to our councillor, President Protemna Tatis.
Yes, thank you, President Dominguez. Just, you know, I want to just acknowledge and thank you for calling that special meeting tomorrow, right? I think it's appropriate. We've got a lot of passion on this call, and it's going to be a good dialogue and a good conversation. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, President Protemna Tatis. This is President Dominguez speaking. At this time, I'm going to call on Councilor Booker, Jr.
I want to thank you all for joining this meeting this evening. I appreciate you sharing your comments. Karen Paul, you know, thank you very much for getting involved with Whalers Helping Whalers and just helping our community moving forward. I look forward to all of you joining us at the special meeting for public comment tomorrow. And I will save my comments about the statue tomorrow and listen to all sides of the issue. And, you know, I really look forward to just the dialogue that we're going to have as a community. Thank you.
President Dominguez speaking. Thank you, Councilor Booker, Jr. And with that said, I'm just going to finalize it with just thanking everyone that came on today, that is on, listening today. Also want to thank Mr. Norfield for, for his words tonight, and hopefully you will be available tomorrow so that we can continue this discussion. With that said, I will continue with what's next. Reports and communications, Director of Law. Does anybody have any questions for the Director of Law at this time? Attorney Landrigan. Okay, I do have one, Attorney Landrigan, so you won. This is President Dominguez. All right, number five on the general side, I think is the CDL requirement. What is that class?
Limit, this is Attorney Jeffrey Landrigan, limitations. There was some questions raised as far as Class 1 and Class 2 under a commercial driver's license and what are the maximum tonnages for trucks, trailers, and the like under the different classes. So we just reviewed that and gave an opinion to Public Works.
Okay, thank you. This is President Dominguez speaking. Thank you, Attorney Landrigan.
President Dominguez, just one other thing. I'm sorry, not to interrupt. I just wanted to, I'm, I was guessing that maybe you would be pulling it, but in reviewing the agenda, item 8.1, the tax abatement agreement, if no one was going to pull it, if you could pull it, I just noticed the typo. Attorney Sweeney and I noticed some typographical errors in the-
All right, go ahead.
-first section of that. And so I just want to have an opportunity to, to explain what it really should say and, and have everybody vote on, on, on the abatement that is being asked for.
Okay, this is President Dominguez. I'll pull it. Thank you, Attorney Landrigan, for picking that up. Thank you so much. All right, I'll see no others. Councillors with questions? We are going to move on. All right, at this time, council committee reports. Let's have Councilor Booker, Jr.
The council committee report.
Yes. At that meeting today with public safety.
Went over policies that want to see change within the community. And the chief was there, Chief Riker was there, we had Captain Wright, and we also had Captain Burgenston as well to address some of the issues that we are seeing within our community and some of the policies. And we plan on having another public safety committee meeting in two more weeks as well.
Okay, thank you. This is President Dominguez. This is President Dominguez speaking. Thank you, I'm sorry.
To address some of those other concerns that the residents may have as well. Did you?
You're all set, okay. President Dominguez speaking. Thank you, councillor Booker Jr. At this time, I'm going to call on President Protebnar Tatis.
Yeah, thank you, President Dominguez. We did have an administration meeting, committee meeting tonight. We did move three appointments this evening. It was, it's going to be on the agenda for Chinny Austin to Economic Development Commission and Karen Paul to Parks and Recreation and also James Singleton from an alternate member to permanent on, to regular on Parks and Rec. And that is on the agenda tonight. Thank you.
President Dominguez speaking. Thank you, President Protebnar Tatis. Before I go to the mayor, let me just acknowledge State Rep. Representative Anthony Nolan is on with us in this meeting. Thank you so for being a part of tonight's meeting. With that said, I will have the mayor's office of communications, Mayor Michael Passero. Your honor, sir.
Council President Dominguez.
Yes.
Liaison to education and recreation, councillor John Sadie.
Thank you, sir.
Just a reminder that we are continuing to work on the hundred dollar, hundred million dollar, hundred and ten, eight million dollar rehabilitation of the New London High School, which is now called the North Campus, and also a fifty million dollar rehabilitation of the Benny Dover Jackson Middle School. The South Campus meeting is scheduled for Friday, the 19th at nine o'clock. All are invited to attend. And the North Campus meeting is scheduled for Friday, the 26th, also at nine o'clock, and all are welcome to attend that. Thank you for your time, councillor John Sadie.
President Dominguez speaking. Thank you, councillor Sadie, for always keeping us updated with what's happening in, in your meetings there. Thank you so much. With that said, I'll have now Mayor Michael Passero. Your honor, sir.
Thank you, President Dominguez. Good evening, council. Good evening, members of the public. This is fantastic. We have fluctuating in the mid-sixties attendance at this meeting. And I can't wait to have everybody back here on the third floor of City Hall and the council chambers for these meetings. You'll also find that when the renovations are done, we'll have more room up here and also better technology. So I look forward to that. Those renovations are ongoing. It's a little challenging to work here these days, but then we're still, we still have a good part of our staff working from home. So the timing was, was good for that. Want to remind everybody that we continue to produce a weekly podcast, our Talk to London podcast. I hope you're all tuning into those. The last, last week's podcast, we generally put them on Fridays. Last week's podcast was about the pandemic, the pandemic. And Brian Scott Smith interviewed Mark Zimmer, a professor of chemistry at Con College. Fascinating, fascinating discussion. I encourage you all to tune into that. Our work for the census continues. This committee is very, very engaged. I encourage any of you who are interested, listening into it. If they do, they, they meet virtually at one o'clock on Tuesdays. So the next meeting is 1:00 p.m. tomorrow. But once again, I want to thank Karen and Nick Fisher for stepping up, serving as the chairs of this very important Complete Count Committee. The staff work by, by Judy Cox and Jeannie Milstein and many others. I don't, I don't mean to leave anybody out, but that continues. I want to congratulate the LGBTQ community in our city. Momentous, momentous victory today at the Supreme Court. It really is historic. So I congratulate all of you for the hard work and, and joining the rest of us protected by the Civil Rights Act of 1864. Congratulations, it's long overdue. And it also restores the faith, our faith in the Supreme Court, I think, as two of the generally conservative-leaning members appointed by the current president will join the majority on that. So very proud of this moment. We continue work, putting together the Long Term Recovery Committee. It's Maggie Clowett has stepped up to chair it. We have, we're ready to kick it off. We have chairs for all the subcommittees. For those of you who don't know, the Long Term Recovery Committee is part of our emergency management system. It's intended to get the city out of the current, you know, recover from the current effects of this pandemic, which have been immense, especially on a economic, from an economic perspective, but really from a human perspective also. The effects have been tremendous. So we have our long-term committee. We have a flow chart. It starts, of course, with our, with our recovery coordinator, and that's Maggie Clowett. She'll be leading the effort. And then we have citizens heading up our Business and Economic Development Subcommittee, Health and Human Services, Education, Public Safety, Tourism, Arts, Transportation and Public Relations, Community Recreation and Sports Committee. And we have a local and state government liaison. And city staff will be working with all these volunteers on these committees. Very excited about this effort. The governor and the lieutenant governor will be joining one of our first meetings to congratulate us on getting this set up. We continue to have our weekly staff meetings. These are very, very daily, excuse me, daily staff meetings. All of the department heads get together daily at two o'clock in a virtual meeting to exchange notes and to, you know, try to coordinate our efforts, not only for general business, which we're also conducting at the same time, but also for the numerous complications that, you know, that we've been dealing with because of the COVID situation. One of those departments I want to, I want to recognize especially today because their work on, has been, you know, especially important. They've been especially impacted, and that's our Recreation Department under the leadership of Tommy Major and Sharon Busquet, Lori and the whole team over there. You know, they have gotten our parks up and running. They've been working diligently to understand the phase-two rules to be able to provide more recreational opportunities for our city, especially our youth. So we'll be rolling out this week more opportunities and opening up more of our recreational spaces. They're also having, you know, we're not, like, some cities are just not bothering. They're not going to have their summer camps. We can't do that in New London. We can't abandon our children. So I want to recognize the work of the Recreation Department, figuring out how to do that safely and still offering that opportunity to our children. Very, very proud of them over there and very grateful. And of course, we had our, between the last council meeting and this one, we had our, our second Black Lives Matter rally. I think, of course, I'm very proud. I share the city's pride. There was amazing pride that day in, in the city joining this movement. You know, there's some controversy, you know, over the vandalism. But I, you know, in my view, considering what's going on all over the world, all over the country, the cities that are tearing themselves apart, I think we held ourselves above and, you know, trying to deal with these very difficult issues, trying to make sure that this changed. I want to, you know, give my appreciation to our police department and their performance that day. I just think they did a very good job. And, and, you know, I look forward to continuing the discussion. And I thank our young people for really engaging us, you know, along with the whole world in these efforts. The Chamber of Commerce gave us a headline billing on June 9th last week. We, it was, it would normally be the annual State of New London breakfast or luncheon or whatever it turned out to be for a particular year. And that's where we get to present to all the business community the, the successes of the city over the past year and where we're going and pitch development in New London. Of course, this is our life now, so we had to do it in a virtual environment. But, you know, I think it went very well. I want to thank Phyllis Reyes for his presentation. We were also joined by Patrick Green from L&amp;M, an important community partner. And I thank the Chamber of Commerce in Southeastern Connecticut for that opportunity to showcase the city of New London. So we also, one other very important thing that's been going on in this city to get us through this pandemic, and many of you in this meeting are part of this effort and have been part of this effort since it started four years ago, and that's our New London Human Services Network. They generally met once every three, three months. This is all of our social service agencies that help our, our community here in New London. And since the pandemic started, they're meeting on a pretty much every other week basis. Much more frequently, there's generally sixty or seventy providers on the phone sharing ideas, working together and just networking. It's a sponsorship between our Human Services Department, Jeannie Milstein, and Liberty Bank, Sue Murphy. And it's a structure that it's great that we had it in place so that we could call upon it when we needed it more than ever with this pandemic, a once-in-a-century event that we're working hard to get through and to save lives and to get people through this. I'm, I'm not going to try to go into the details on this. I just want to make sure that it's on your radar. Our high school graduation is coming up. And certainly, you know, our class of 2020 has been deeply impacted by this. If you all think back to the excitement of your senior year in high school and that major transition in your lives and everything that goes with it, it's, it's an incredible tradition, and it's been completely interrupted by the, for this class of 2020. So we want to do everything we can to try to make it up, make it up to them in, in any way that we can. So I, you know, I commend the school district. They have just, well, they've been working so hard in so many impactful issues that arose out of this pandemic. But one of the other things they've had to do was plan a graduation that they could do within this particular environment of social distancing. And they put together a great program. It's going to, the actual physical event will be Monday at Ocean Beach Park, the 22nd. But it's all being virtually orchestrated. And so I'll let the school district provide the details, but put the date on your calendar that it's going to be happening. You'll probably be watching it from the comfort of your home on your computer stream like the rest of our lives these days. I really want to express my deep appreciation to a long-serving member of the Parks and Rec Commission, Margaret Cottner. I noticed that she has resigned from that commission, and her impact on this city is legendary, together with her, her partner Nancy Bowdy. The two of them are fixtures in this city and have really contributed to the great work we've done improving our, our recreational facilities. And I want to thank Margaret Cottner for her years and years of service. I can't picture Parks and Rec Committee without her there, the committee meeting without her there. But we'll miss her, and she deserves her retirement from that. Finally, I want to thank Chef Tom and the Wellers Helping Wellers Movement. I've lost track. They've done, they meet, they, they cook every Saturday, producing meals. They've been doing it at the Elks Club. So I thank the Elks Club for, for access to their facility. But Chef Tom and his other chefs are doing amazing work and a whole team of volunteers, a lot of city employees, doing just great work, producing hundreds and hundreds of meals and, and a crew of volunteers that disturb them about, you know, around our city every weekend. So if you're on, if you're sitting on the beach or having a beach day on a Saturday, just think there are, there are great volunteers that are, that are helping in the city and giving that time up. And Chef Tom is a major one, and I want to thank him. Thank you. I went on longer than I planned, but I appreciate all of your time and assistance.
President Dominguez speaking. Thank you, mayor. At this time, does anybody have any questions for the mayor? Okay. Councillor Burke, go ahead. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you very much, President Dominguez. Through you to Mayor Passero. Mayor, thank you so much for all the updates. I just wanted to, in the Public Safety Committee, it was asked about the Public Safety Policy Review Committee, which you mentioned will meet this Wednesday. I just wondered now that we have some more people in attendance, if you have any further details, specifically what time it is. I'm sure the details will be posted on the website. And at what point will you be announcing who the committee members are?
The, the organizational meeting, and hopefully we'll get started on our work also, is Wednesday. It will be post, the meeting notice will be posted tomorrow. And all of that information will be forthcoming. But it's very important, I think, the, the idea that Dean McKnightick from college is to have this really core committee of community that will spend time understanding and studying the policies, practices, budget, everything about our public safety mechanisms, including the human services component that we've brought in over the year to bolster it so that they can help us understand where we are, educate all of us as to what's already in place, and then recommend where we need to go from here to be more responsive to this community. I want to focus on our community and, and what we need here. So I look forward to that, and I thank the people who have volunteered. And the only reason I'm not disclosing the names of everybody on the committee, it's, it's just not a secret. It's just that there's a couple of more people I'm waiting for their final decision for. It's a big ask. And, and I just want to wait until the, the committee is complete.
Thank you very much. This is councillor Burke. Nothing further.
I should also say, and I'm sorry to, well, if anybody wants me to, wants to ask me about the removal of the statue yesterday, I'd be happy to comment on it. But I think it's pretty much been covered in, in the paper. But if anybody has any questions on that, I'm not ducking it. I just, I think it's already been out there. Thank you.
This is President Dominguez. No, thank you, mayor. I think, you know what, it's, it's been out there and it's everywhere. So if anybody has a question, that's fine. If not, you know what, it's, okay. So at this time, only just to tell you those, those that are new.
Yeah.
Councillor Dice has her hand up.
Yeah, but I just saw the hands. I just want to make it aware that in, in meetings, only, only those that are in the audience doing public comment is the only time that you are allowed to speak for those people that are raising their hands that are not councillors.
Oh, it's, yeah, yeah.
It's not that we're being disrespectful and don't want you to talk. It's just that it's, it's protocol. But tomorrow, we're going to have a meeting, so you sign up. Okay, but I know, I'm just saying it because I saw, I saw Mr. Brown raise his hand, and I just want to acknowledge different people and know that we can't at this time, we, we can't have that from the, from the audience right now. It's just for councillors.
And I think a lot of people know, President Dominguez, that you're free to ask me a question anytime. So you call me, emails, you see the best, texts.
Yes, sir.
I'm very available, and I answer everybody.
Yes, you do. So with that said, councillor Dice, I just wanted to make that little announcement. Go ahead, you're all set.
Okay, councillor Dice, through you, president, to mayor Passero. I didn't get a chance to ask, can you guys hear me? I'm unmuted, right?
No, you're good, you're good. I can.
I didn't get a chance to ask this question. And one of the things that I hope this committee addressed, because we're hiring new police officers, I want to make sure that we don't get someone who got fired from another area. And are we going to be able to look at their history? So that was one of the things that I hope you put right on air and be looking out for. And then the other question that, that I had, that, that I was concerned about is just that making sure that if we have repeat complaints from officers, and it sounded like the chief did address that, but I just want to make sure that we have policy in place where if we get a police officer that's constantly having repeat issues that is being dealt with because, and looking at our committee that, that oversee, I, I forgot what we call it. I'm drawing a blank right now because I got my computer and my phone working.
Police Community Relations Committee.
Yes, making sure that if we design another one, they have subpoena power. Because we really need to make sure that we're lining things up where the citizens here feel safe. So I just wanted to suggest that, not suggest, I think that needs to be a requirement at this, the group that you're bringing for, just so we're lining up, making sure everything is looked at and policies are in place. But I have to say thank you for. But I have to say thank you for doing that because it is, it's urgent, it's needed. And this was Counselor Dice.
Well, thank you, Counselor Dice, and I understand all those points and I think you'll find that it will be very thorough. And I'm, I'm also, I, I'm also confident that once, you know, the committee meets and we understand, everybody understands the people that are on it, there, there probably isn't a person in this meeting that won't have a relationship with at least a one person on the member of that committee to be able to speak openly with them, share their views or already have, already been in conversations with these people. I really want this to be a manageable community conversation. So we're starting with a small group to really get a good understanding of where we're at so we know where we have to go. That's, that's the thought.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Passaro. Is there any other councillor? Right, at this time? Any other councillor? All right. See you none. Thank you, Counselor Booker. Did you have your hand raised?
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
Yes, to you, President Dominguez, to the mayor, Mayor Passaro. How do you feel about the racial injustice? Because I got some of these messages from emails from some of my resident, some of the constituents. How do you feel about the racial injustice that is occurring in our country? And what do you want the New London community to know about the steps you are taking so that some of these injustices would not occur within our city?
Well, I, I share the outrage that I think is universally shared around the world. And I just, I think about this a lot of times in the context of where I started my life, which was, you know, in the sixties. And, you know, I remember the day that Martin Luther King was killed and I remember that whole cycle of, of trying to draw attention to the racial tensions in this country and the social injustice. And, you know, as a young person, you really felt like there was energy to the, to the movement then and, you know, the country was going to improve. And, you know, unfortunately, it didn't happen. And we're now, you know, forty or fifty years later, Dr. King's been dead fifty years or more, fifty-two years, you know, it, it's time. And I hope that, you know, George Floyd's death marks that historic moment where really this country finally woke up and, and truly addressed the, the issues. So I'm, I'm, I am, I welcome this conversation. And I think in New London, we talk about our diversity all the time and we're proud of it. And we know we've been there for four hundred years because we're a seaport town, but that doesn't mean we're not affected by the, the culture of the country and the social and general social injustice that, that some members of our community face. And I think especially, you know, black Americans, because it's, they've been here as long as us, four hundred years. And, and I think it, it's time we recognize that. And looking around, I'll tell you one big message I got from this is looking around and learning some of the rich history, African American history of New London, over the, over the history of our city. You know, it, it is not well taught. I didn't learn it in grammar school. And it's time that we did that. It's time that we really celebrated it. So I, I look forward to this conversation. I look forward to making some really great progress here. And, you know, like I think New London prides itself on taking a lead and, and I'm just great, I'm, I'm grateful to the children for, for doing this. And that's, that brings me back to my own youth. So I, I think it's, I think it's great and I, and I appreciate the question, Councilor.
Thank you very much, Mayor Passaro.
Thank you, Counselor Booker, and thank you, Mayor Passaro, for that response. So any other councillor? Okay, see you none. All right, we're going to move on to the Consent Agenda. President Protemp Nartartas, you're on.
Yes, thank you, President Dominguez. Consent Agenda, the Consent Agenda proposal set forth at the regular meeting of June fifteenth, twenty twenty are either one, accepted for the record, two, referred to committee named, three, waived for committee to be acted upon as proposed, or four, consented to as proposed.
Have a second.
Counselor Burke, second.
Thank you, Counselor Burke, for seconding that. Okay, I'm going to read the list now. Make sure, councilors, that if you're going to pull it, pull it, state your name so I can write you down, right? Okay, so.
Counselor Dominguez, can you hear me?
Yes.
For some reason, I'm muted.
Oh, I don't know. I'm not in charge of that, sir. Let's see.
You cannot hear anything that's been said for the last five minutes.
Oh, thank you for letting me know. I, I wasn't aware of that.
I cannot hear you.
Daniel, can you, can you guys hear me?
I'm going to leave this meeting and reconnect.
Hold on, let me see, let me see, Counselor Sadiva. Daniel, can, are you able to help him?
Reconnect me?
Yes. Let me, IT, are you able to reconnect or does he have to come out again?
Um, I think he might have to leave and come back because we can hear him, but I guess he can't hear us.
Yeah, let me see, let me, did he say he was going to leave? Let me just see. I'll have to.
I believe he just left.
Okay, so he'll come back. Let me, guys, let me just, let me wait for him.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
I still can't hear you, though.
Can you guys hear me, the other councilors? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know what's going on, Sadie. Can you hear me now?
All right, I'm going to sign out and sign back in. Thank you very much for your indulgence.
Yep. I don't know, was there? Could there be some?
This is Counselor Dice.
Yeah, hold, hold on, Counselor Dice. Let me just, was that IT? That was Daniel?
No, that wasn't me.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, Counselor Dice, what, what did you want? Go ahead.
I want to, I want to suggest that if Counselor Sadie come back on and have the same issue, that he use the phone to call in. That is what I'm doing tonight. So I just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Dice. This is President Dominguez. Thank you for that suggestion.
President Dominguez, this is City, this is City Clerk Jonathan Yala.
Yes.
Maybe Counselor Sadie, what he needs to do when he logs in is if he looks down at the bottom of his screen, touches it, he has to actually call in with the audio.
Oh.
So when you log in to Zoom, you can't unmute yourself until you actually call in with the audio and it's the button on the bottom left.
Yes, I, I have done that. I was on, on, I don't know exactly how I got shut off, but.
We've got you now. You're on, sir.
So have we gone through the Consent Agenda yet?
We will wait for you.
No, no, yeah, we, we got.
No, we're not moving until we move together, sir.
Thank you very much. I'm good now.
You're welcome. All right, so at this time, same thing, Counselor Sadie, what we're doing is I'm going to read them off. If you're going to call one out, please call it out, pull it out and then state your name so I can write you down. All right, so we'll begin seven point oh unfinished business, seven point one, A, B, C, D, E, F, seven point two, seven point three, eight point oh, new business, eight point one, I'm going to pull that one. All right, eight point two.
I believe goes along with eight point one, so I'll pull that.
All right, Sadie, thank you. Counselor Sadie, all right, eight point three.
Paul.
President Protemp Nartartas, thank you. Eight point four. Eight point, eight point four, Sadie. Counselor Sadie, thank you. Eight point five.
Paul, eight point five A.
Who's that, please?
Counselor Booker.
Thank you. So eight point five A and B, that's Counselor Booker. Okay, eight point six.
Which, which was what?
Eight point six is the, the city council approves about the, the paving.
I will pull eight point six. This is Counselor Burke.
Thank you, Counselor Burke. Counselor Burke is eight point six. Thank you. Nine point oh, no appointments, ten point oh, no executive session, and eleven point oh, okay, that's the German. Let me see, let's go to President Protemp Nartartas.
All items having unanimous support of the city council are hereby adopted with a single rule called vote. The motions are seconded, the chair calls the rule and the chair declares the motions to be unanimously voted and adopted.
City Clerk, can I get a second?
Counselor Dice, second.
Thank you, Counselor Dice, second. This is President Dominguez. City Clerk Ayala, go ahead, roll call, please.
Counselor Dice.
Yes.
Counselor Sadie.
Yes.
President Protemp Nartartas.
Yes.
Counselor Burke. Counselor Booker Junior.
Yes.
President Dominguez.
Yes.
Counselor Goodwin.
Hold on, maybe he's having.
It's okay, six zero. I mean, yes, just six.
Okay, thank you very much, City Clerk Ayala. All right, at this time, we'll go right to, that's me, eight point one, move to CAM.
Second.
Thank you. This is President Dominguez. This has been seconded by Counselor Sadie. I'll defer this one to Attorney Landrigan with the corrections.
Yes, President Dominguez, thank you. This is Attorney Jeffrey Landrigan. Just wanted to point out in section one of the backup, which is eight point one, page two, the chart that is in section one is actually a chart from a previous agreement when negotiations with the developer first started. And actually what stated is a little two in favor of what the developer is looking for. So the change to that section one would be as follows. The, the percentage of assessment deferred.
Point of order, could you just give us a chance to get to that page, please?
Yes.
Is that a, um, eight point one, right?
Yes, eight point one, this is President Dominguez. And all he's doing, he's making the corrections on that, Sadie.
I want to figure out where the, what page?
Page two.
Eight point one, page two.
Thank you. I'll turn it on.
Okay. Go ahead.
In section one, that chart needs to be amended as follows to be consistent with what the developer presented to you during the June first public hearing. The first year, the percentage of assessment deferred needs to be reduced from one hundred percent to eighty percent. So that's a change in the city's favor. The second year, percentage of assessment deferred needs to be reduced from a hundred percent to sixty percent. And then the next should read third year through the twentieth year would all be at forty percent. So I don't think you need to amend the CAM language itself because it says that you're just approving the tax agreement, but I have just sent to the council secretary an amended one for President Dominguez for you to sign after the vote. But I just want to let everybody know that the typographical errors in the backup needed to be corrected as I just indicated. And so just a motion to approve the CAM will be approving it with these modifications. Year one, an eighty percent deferment. Year two, a sixty percent deferment. And years three through twenty, a forty percent deferment.
Be like Attorney Landrigan.
Okay, thank you.
Point of order, Attorney, Attorney Landrigan, you don't think that there's a need for somebody to make a motion to amend that? Not the, not the CAM to make a motion to amend the resolution?
You know, that's a good idea. If you wanted to, if someone wanted to make a motion to amend the section one as I just presented it and have that seconded and voted on for the minutes, that's a good idea, Counselor Sadie.
Yeah, this is President Dominguez. Thank you, Attorney Landrigan and Counselor Sadie, go ahead. You could go ahead and man, and make that, amend that.
I'd like to make a motion to amend Resolution zero six one five two zero dash one, eight, which is considered eight point one, page two on our backup. Section one, year percent of assessment deferred, first year changed from one hundred percent to eighty percent. Year two changed from one hundred percent to sixty percent. Year three changed from eighty percent to forty percent and that will show all the way through year twenty, which will continue at forty percent.
This is Counselor Burke, second.
I'm sorry, Counselor Burke, just seconded it. Thank you. Any discussion on that? Okay, see you none. All right, all those in favor to the amendment to the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Raise your hands. Okay, I think I see six or seven. Okay, all right, motion carries. All right, at this time, we're going to vote on the main motion now.
Discussion on the main motion?
Yep. Discussion on the main motion for those interested in, okay. Counselor Sadie, that's you with your hand, I guess, up. Go ahead.
Thank you. I find this to be a very, very exciting project, but I still feel very uncomfortable with the tax abatement, even with the reductions that we just passed. I, therefore, I plan to vote against it. Not, I don't, it's not that I don't want to see and I understand that RJ is a reputable forum. I just think that the PAC we're offering may be a little bit too lucrative. So I'm not planning to support the motion as presented this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Sadie. This is President Dominguez speaking. This is a question to Attorney Landrigan. Reading the resolution and some of the backup, I believe that this, this project, this development is going to bring close to like almost thirty-two million dollars or more or direct areas. I think it's for direct areas, I'm sorry. Going to bring a lot of money to our, to our, am I correct on that?
Good evening, Counselor Dominguez. This is Felix Reyes, Director of ODP. Yeah, the, the project's estimated to be between thirty and forty million dollars. So the, the, the construction cost is rich and it's lucrative in a way where we will see about seven hundred thousand dollars in building permits from this project and obviously provide some housing for a lot of the, the, the major industry that's here in New London. So that's, that's, that's the exciting part. There's, there's other economic factors. I'm not sure if, if you want to go into that part.
Yes, please, yes, yes. This is President Dominguez. I know that.
Sure, absolutely. So, you know, I, I think everybody knows that, you know, the downtown is our central business district and I, and I try to tell folks all the time is that when downtown was designed and developed, it was a regional business district. And as, as this corner of the state has evolved, this towns around us has evolved, they've created their own main streets. Everyone used to come to downtown as part of the shopping, commerce, jobs and industries. And as well as we've done a great job over the last, say, fifty years to preserve the integrity of our downtowns. I always look at it as, you know, kind of, and I, I spoke to a couple of the councilors and use this metaphor as being not, we, we haven't grown into that shoe size yet. It's like a child that walks around with their parents' shoes on. And, and as that child grows, obviously the shoe fits. The only way we grow and kind of fit into that shoe size of our downtown, fill our empty storefronts, allow our businesses to grow and prosper is that we have to bring more foot traffic, we have to bring more people, we have to densify our cities to help stimulate our businesses and allow them to grow. So one of the things that by, by adding additional housing, you know, you know, allowing those that, that work in New London, live in New London. give them more opportunities, that's what our businesses need. That helps kind of balance the growth of our downtown. So when you see these types of projects, that you see a parcel J, you see the Thames and the Residence at Fort Trumbull. These are exciting projects on this particular location, on a piece of land that has a lot of environmental issues. And to partner up with a developer that's looking to do the remediation work on the project, I think it's obviously a bonus for the city. That is something that is very difficult for the city to manage. That's, those are, that type of funding is very difficult to come, to get, and it comes with a lot of strings attached. So right now, we have a developer that has an immense amount of experience in working in urban cities, developing in urban cities, builds a great relationship with our, with our local community, our local business owners, has shown a track record of showing an ability to procure local talent to work on these projects, which is incredibly important and something that's been discussed on multiple times during our public hearings, during our discussions, on making sure is that as we allow development to happen in New London, that we want to make sure that it's the residents, it's the local businesses that have the opportunity to work on these, on these projects. So, absolutely.
So, but Director Reyes, but I, I would, so the amount of money that's gonna come in because of the taxes on it?
Correct. So you're talking, right now, it's around $11 million in taxes during the schedule is what the city will get. So those that are new to, I think this is our third time I'm speaking this in public, so those that have, that don't know much on the background history of it. So this project is part of the Fort Trumbull area and has been on, the site hasn't been taxed in, I would say, 20 years, almost 20 years, and hasn't been collecting taxes. So this project would be an added to. Unlike, I mean, I think a lot of us understand the history and development and the generations before us where city blocks were torn down. But we're not doing that, right? We're trying to rebuild and redevelop portions of our neighborhoods that are blighted, that have environmental issues, that, you know, it's our responsibility to make sure we clean these up. Same thing with like the Hempstead neighborhood and taking over that project. That is all part of the grander vision of making sure that these neighborhoods have green spaces that they no longer have, are surrounded by environmentally contaminated locations. And do what we can as a city to do smart development, you know? And that smart development requires that these projects bring in tax revenue, that these projects do not put a burden on our school systems, that these projects don't put a burden on our infrastructure. So all these things are all calculated within our office to essentially say, is this a good development or is this a bad development? And analyzing this project, understanding what the market is for our housing, our industries. This, in my opinion, and in the formulas that we've calculated in our office, is that this is a good project for New London. So that's why our office supports it.
Thank you very much. And for that reason and many more, that's why I'm gonna be voting for this in support of it. We need to grow the grant list, get money to come into our city so we can do other things that we want to do for the residents in our city. So with that said, I see our Councilor Dice, go ahead.
Hey, this is Councilor Dice. I have to say thank you because one of the things that was requested by Councilor Booker was what is their, how many minority organizations or contractors that they support? So they did respond back, and I asked them to quantify it because we had got a percentage. So my understanding and what they had shown, they track the hours that people work. So I just want to say, Director Reyes, I'm glad that, you know, they're doing their due diligence. I want to encourage every time we bring new developers in and so forth, these sort of things, I know that I would like to know. I like to know how many minorities they bring in and working within their corporations. So if we could just make that a part of the package, you know, it would be so helpful. So we have a full understanding that this corporation that's coming in is invested in our community. So I just want to say I'm thankful that they, you know, got the information to us, and I will be supporting this. So this is Councilor Dice.
Thank you, Councilor Dice, this is President Dominguez speaking. Any other, Councilor Burke, and then I'll call on Councilor Sadie. Go ahead, Councilor Burke.
Thank you, President Dominguez, this is Councilor Burke. Through you to Felix Reyes. So we have the abatement and the development agreement on our agenda tonight. Is that the final council approval that's required to finalize this development?
Yeah, I think Peter Davis is on, I think Peter is better to speak on the process. I don't know if he's still on, I think from RCD.
Just, so Director Reyes, just a, you know, a simple answer is fine for this one because it's kind of, hopefully, to lead into a follow-up. Will this come before council again? Or is, for our say, is this finalized as of, with affirmative votes this evening?
That's where I would rather have Peter Davis, just, yeah, to answer that question. Anything left?
Thank you for the question, Councilor Burke, this is Peter Davis. The short answer is yes. Your tentative action tonight, should you choose to approve this, or the two items on the agenda, this would be the last, the last action of the city council. And we'd be able to move forward with the project quickly, actually.
Thank you very much, this is Councilor Burke, a few comments on that additional question. So I support this project greatly. I think it's a great idea for our city. In terms of, I know abatement is a controversial word, but I believe that the developer and, you know, the ODP did a great job throughout multiple public hearings, explaining the reasons for that, how it's gonna be mutually beneficial to the city and the developer. The only concern that I have is really not a concern with the project. But through you, Mr. President, to the mayor, when we approved the sale of the Martin Center, there was a sort of verbal agreement that before more developments would cross the finish line, that we would see some progress on a community center task force. I understand that recent history, the past couple of weeks in our world and the city have been, you know, very challenging and difficult. However, I would still, you know, like to have some sort of an update on is, you know, is that verbal agreement being held upon? Do we have some sort of tangible movement on the establishment of the community center task force before we give our final approval this evening?
I have not reformed a task force. I have not, I have not done that yet. I have continued to work on the project, I've been in discussions with at least one of the councils on this. Couple of members of the community and in direct conversations with a potential partner. But I'd be, you know, be happy to figure out a process to move it forward. You know it's been a significant goal of mine. We felt like we had some movement on that just before the whole world turned upside down. And that's been a significant impediment, especially because of the effect on the partner that I was, that I've been courting to try to help us, you know, put together a plan to establish an indoor rec facility. But I'm still pretty excited about the prospect. We have significant assets to offer to a partner. I continue to believe that we do need a partner to do this, that we would be a mistake to build a facility. And it depends on the annual appropriation process every year to maintain and sustain that. I've spoken on this issue before, we're still struggling to find ways to to add upon the maintenance of the existing buildings that we are responsible for. So I would like to see this facility established with a business plan that sustains it well into the future and keeps it a first-rate facility that would be on day 1, rather than seeing it start to slip into, you know, you know, just become deferred maintenance from day 1 because of the lack of assets to keep it up. So, but you know what, I'm very open to putting together a more formal process because I think what we need and what lacked in the effort four years ago when it stalled was community consensus on that business plan, how we make this facility work. I'm confident we can get one built. What I'm not confident on is that we get community consensus on a partner and how we can make it work. I, that was a little long-winded, Councilor Burke, I hope I clarified that a little. My commitment is very strong. I would love to have a plan in place to move forward by the end of this calendar year.
Thank you for a response, Mr. Mayor. I am sure that you are working hard on it, but I do just want to, again, hold us to, you know, being able to show the community that now we're, you know, we had this discussion during the sale of the Martin Center, and now we're at our next development agreement to be able to show the community something tangible. I've asked you questions, so I'll yield my time at this moment. Thank you, President Dominguez.
Thank you, this is President Dominguez speaking, thank you, Councilor Burke. At this time, I'm gonna call on Councilor Booker Jr.
Thank you very much, President Dominguez. Through you, President Dominguez, to Jason Rudnick, I don't know if he's here or not, or Peter Davis.
Or Bill Sweeney is on the line also.
Okay.
Oh, Jason's right there, okay, awesome. Yeah, how are you doing, Jason?
I'm well, how are you?
I want to thank you very much, Jason, for providing the information to the councils and I for requesting a number of minority contractors that have worked on your projects in the past. One of my questions that came to my mind is, what is your strategic plan to reach out to local qualified historically disenfranchised contractors to complete the work on your project? So that we can have the same results that you have demonstrated to us in New Haven?
Yeah, it's a great question. The answer actually is, I don't want to say it's simple, but it's to use the same formula that we've used before, which is to work directly with our general contractor, as well as the city of New London, to avail ourselves of the resources that you have at your hands, where you'll have information on the local contractor pool, the local labor pool. And we'd be able to sit down and have that conversation to make sure that we can implement a practice whereby we're able to get as many of those individuals onto the site, or as many of those companies. I couldn't sit here today and rattle those names off, but that's how we've been successful in other communities, by working with those communities directly, within the municipalities, the individuals who know the answers to the specific question you just asked me, to be able to provide the best results.
Awesome. Because just for some of the residents who are listening right now, when I mentioned historically disenfranchised groups, I'm referring to women as well, minorities as well, and you provided that data for us. Minority percentage is 48.4%. People have worked in your contracts, I mean, your projects. Female percentage is 8.1% in apprenticeship, which was 16.0%. So just want to thank you very much for providing that research and that information. I have no further questions at this moment. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Booker Jr. This is President Dominguez speaking. I'm not sure if anybody else. I think, yeah, okay, Councilor Goodwin, thank you, sir. You have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. Through you to the mayor. Mayor Pastor, I just wanted to follow up on Councilor Burke's ask to see if there's something formal or tangible coming our way. I think now is a great and appropriate time, based on how we started this call and the unrest in the world, that we start to reimagine and reexamine how we honor all of our residents and what type of equity we have for all of our residents. A community center is a huge item that has come up during protests, it has come up prior to it. I know you and your administration, as well as prior when you were on council, spent a lot of time on a community center. So I just wanted to follow up and get a little bit more concrete answers with regards to Councilor Burke's sentiment and/or ask/request.
You know, Councilor Goodwin, that's a good question. I'm searching for, you know, a good answer for you. I just have to repeat what I said before. I think you're well aware of the partner that I'm trying to attract. You know, redoubling my efforts to do that. What I don't know, or what I need help with is building community consensus for that. So I'm ready to engage with you and whoever to start that process again. So I've dusted off the file from the collaborative that we had working on this. It probably goes back six years now, or seven years, with the Liberty Bank Foundation. And we had a sizable budget that we worked with, too. It culminated in the proposal that was presented to the then-city council in, right after the 2015 election, so it would have been in early 2016. And the goal at that time was to establish the facility at the Edgerton School property. I mean, I've described the process as getting us to first and goal, literally. We were, we were just about, you know, into the end zone with achieving that dream in New London. And unfortunately, the city council allowed the clock to run down on the purchase of the property, and the rest is history. And I think that one good thing that can come out of this, and I feel new energy on this council, I feel new urgency in the community, and I think we have to go after it. And so I'm ready to do that, I'm ready to partner with anybody. In the meantime, I am still working very hard, nearly every week, working towards that goal. It's difficult. And suggestions on other partners that make a business plan work, the thing we have to work out is sustainability of the facility. Okay, to follow up. Help, I'm sorry, does that answer your question?
So it answers the first part of that question. I guess the second part would be, is there an alternate plan if, for some reason, we're unsuccessful and the vision that you've already cultivated? Do we have other consensus around a, I don't want, I don't like Plan Bs and Plan Cs. Is there a second scenario for us that we could also go after? I'm sure you're aware, this call specifically, we're very much interested in ensuring that we have equity and ensuring that we are responsible with this new funding that's coming in. So in doing so, we have, we have very limited commitment to what comes next. But this council has been very appreciative and very forthcoming with our goals and our mission for the future of New London. But I want to make sure that we're heard clearly with regards to building this community center and/or developing this task force. And I just want to hear your thoughts with regards to what happens if the goal that you had originally is not the one that has the consensus?
Yeah, in my, you know, I don't have a Plan B, so I'm glad you don't like Plan Bs. I don't have a Plan B. The model that I'm following is a well-tested model. It works in most every significant or major city in our state. Most of our cities are small, none of them are quite as small as New London. But you, you know, you look at any of, any of the cities, Middletown, Waterbury, Hartford, you know, New Haven, they all have a facility, and the business plan, the same business plan supports that facility. Unfortunately, we lost ours back in 84, I think it was there maybe earlier. And, you know, just working hard to get it back and re-establishing in New London what all the other cities have. And I think, by the way, a recreation facility is an important economic driver on its own. But the connection with this, with this project, I think that we have to keep in mind, is that graph that we showed you during the budget process, where the revenues outpace the expenses. And the tax revenue from this project just makes the city healthier and gives us the ability to reinvest in ourselves. And it's the city council's purview to set the policy on how we spend our revenue. It's just important that we keep that revenue line growing, independent of the tax burden, which is the goal here. So it gives us an ability to reinvest in our community. So it gives us an ability to reinvest in our community along the lines of what you're suggesting. In a way, my job, Director Reyes's job, is to keep building our economic base, building our grant list, so that we have the revenues we need for things like the rec center, which is the glaring piece of our community that we're missing. And I'm not concerned about the city's investment in it, because we invest in recreation. We have, you know, in the course of the last three or four years renovated many of our important outdoor recreation facilities, Bartlett Park, Veterans Field, Toby May Park, the basketball courts there, the tennis courts there. I think we're making great investments in our recreation spaces, and the goal is to, the crowning achievement will be to have a really first-class, nice indoor recreation.
So can we set a deadline or an expectation on when we can start this task force?
Hold my feet to the fire on that, happen to.
As you know it will.
Let's start by, let's start by, let's start by, I'll show you what the collaborative was made up of last time. We had a funder and a partner in the Liberty Bank Foundation. I'm not saying that's an absolute necessary step to recreate, but it makes things easier. But you got my commitment, Councilor Goodwin.
Mr. Mayor, I think that's all I needed. I didn't, we don't, I didn't want to differ too far away from the actual task at hand, but I think that's suffice, thank you.
Well, I'm glad you're tying our development to that, and I'm glad you brought up the subject because it's important to be able to clarify that. So I appreciate that.
Yep, thank you, this is President Dominguez speaking. Thank you, Councilor Goodwin for those questions. Thank you, Mayor Pastor, for the responses. I believe, you know, that's what we want, we want that center to happen. It takes time, it takes money, guys, you know what I mean? One of the things, and I don't want to go into that right now, but you know, we want something that's sturdy, that's permanent, and it's going to cost money. And right now, you know what? We're building equity. So eventually, I'm glad all we need is the mayor to be committed, and I know that it's going to happen. It's going to happen. So with that said, I think, Councilor Sadi, did you raise your hand? I don't know if you did a while back.
I'm fine, the questions I had have been answered. Thank you very much, though.
Thank you. All right, guys, so with that, councilors, we're going to just vote on the main motion, which is 8.1. So let me see, I don't believe that this is, nope, it's not a roll call. So let's just raise your hands, if you're in favor of it, say aye.
Aye.
All right, I see everybody's hand, I think, I think I heard, thank you, Councilor Goodwin, all right? So, and those opposed, say nay. Okay, the main motion passes, thank you very much. Okay. All right, so now we're going to move on to 8.2. That's you, Councilor Sadi.
Move the cam.
Second.
In second.
Chief Counsel hereby authorize the mayor to acknowledge and consent to a certain development agreement dated November 26, 2019 between Renaissance City Development Association Incorporated, the RJ Development and Advisors LLC, and RJDA New London LLC pursuant to section 2.09 of said agreement. I have no further comment. At this time.
Okay, thank you.
That's Councilor Sadi.
All right, thank you, this is President Dominguez, thank you, Councilor Sadi, James Burke, Councilor Burke, go ahead.
Thank you, President Dominguez, this is Councilor Burke. As I mentioned when voting on the tax abatement a moment ago, I'm a strong supporter of this plan. I think it's good for the city. I think it's going to, you know, diversify our, bring in much needed room to our grant list. But I do have to repeat the comments I made before, as much as, you know, I respect the mayor's commitment to Councilor Goodwin made in discussion during the abatement, I need to respect what our community was told when we finalized the sale of the Martin Center, that we would have progress on a task force before going forward. So at this point, I would like to make a motion to table this item to the next regular council meeting.
Second, by Councilor Sadi.
Okay, so there is no discussion on something that's tabled, so we're going to go right into the vote. All right, so remember, this is voting to table 8.2, the development agreement. All right, so you know what, City Clerk Ayala, I want to do this as a roll call vote.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
No problem. Councilor Sadi.
No.
Councilor Dice.
No.
Councilor Goodwin.
Yes.
President Protemp.
No. No.
President Dominguez.
No.
Councilor Burke.
Yes.
Four no, I mean, yeah, four no, two yes.
Yeah, about me, Booker.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Sorry, I apologize.
City Clerk, I thought you forgot one, Councilor.
Yes.
Okay, you have four no, three yes.
No, it's five two.
No, no, yeah.
Five two.
Yeah, I'm sorry, hold on, hold on, President Protemp Nartartas.
For the record, I voted no.
Booker, did you say, what was your vote again?
Said yes.
He said yes, to table it, so it's really four three, I think.
Yeah, that's what I said, four three.
Yeah.
My apologies, City Clerk.
Thank you for apologizing, President Protemp Nartartas, that's really appreciated. All right, so it passed.
Point of order, President Dominguez, are we going to do the roll call vote for all of these, just moving forward? I was a little confused, so on the record, it says that I voted in favor of Burke's motion, but I wasn't intending to, I thought we were doing a full vote.
You know what, I'm sorry.
But I just want to know, so I'm paying attention, because I.
No, you know what?
It's been a rough call, so I just wanted to just know.
You could take, you know, you could take that vote back, you could do it, you could do it. This is the thing, you know what, I should have, I know that when it comes to table, we got to get, we always have that confusion, when it's table, what it means to vote yes and what it means to vote no. So you know what, if.
If we could just reiterate prior to voting, if you're going to switch it to the roll call, so I can make sure I switch gears to no, and I'll also note that it's, you know, a tough call, so I just need you to reiterate it in the beginning, so I know exactly what's happening.
Yes, and I know, you know what, instead of saying, yeah, I have, I understand.
But no worse, thank you.
Pardon me, President Dominguez, this is Councilor Burke. If all the other councilors are in agreement, perhaps the best thing to do at this point would be to recall a roll.
I would love that.
After explaining that a yes vote is to affirm that the motion be tabled and a no vote is to state that it would, you know, remain for further discussion.
Yes, and this is President Dominguez speaking, thank you, Councilor Burke, and thank you again, Councilor Goodwin. I take that, that's my fault, I just, I know these explanations are important, and I apologize. So we're going to take it up again. So remember again, so if you're voting yes, that means that you are in agreement for the process to continue.
No.
No, no, I'm sorry.
No, 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 no.
Okay, all right. You know what?
Oh, my gosh.
No worse.
I'm sorry, all right. I mean, Councilor Burke, Councilor Burke, go ahead, explain it again.
Yeah, so I've made a motion to table this cam until the next regular council meeting. An affirmative vote, a vote yes, would be in agreement that it should be tabled. Vote no would be to that we would continue discussion on the cam as we have been this evening.
Yes, thank you. So with that said, I appreciate you all, thank you so much, President Dominguez speaking. Okay, so let's do.
Do you want me to call it again, President Dominguez?
Let's call it again, let's call it again, start again.
This is City Clerk. All right, you ready? Here we go, President Protemp Nartartas.
No.
Councilor Burke.
Yes.
President Dominguez.
No.
Councilor Booker Jr.
Clarify, no. No.
Councilor Sadi.
No.
Councilor Dice.
No.
Councilor Goodwin.
No.
Okay, we have six no and one yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we will now table this, so now let's vote, let's vote now on the main motion, so 8.1.
Discussion on the main.
Okay, then we know, I think we did, we had discussion on it already.
No, we didn't.
That was a whole discussion we just had. Everyone had like two or three questions to ask. So with that said.
Point of order, Mr. President, I don't have any further discussion, but I believe I did make that motion to table immediately after the cam was called. There's only been discussion on the previous cam, just, I don't have any other questions, but I don't believe other questions have been asked at this cam.
I thought we did, maybe this one, okay, so thank you, Councilor Burke, for that clarification. So with that said, does anybody have any discussion on this, on 8.2? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go right and vote on this. As long as everybody keeps their camera on, I don't have to do a roll call, we just do raise our hands. You got to have your camera on, guys. So all those in favor, all right, for 8.2, raise your hands. That means that's a, yeah, okay, so one, two, three, four, five, six, all right, so six yes, and one, and those opposed, okay, and one no. All right, so the motion carries. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, all right, we will proceed to 8.3, that's President Protemp Nartartas.
Move the cam.
Have a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Councilor Dice.
Thank you, please.
So this is 8.3, humans tax deferment request, it says the city council approves the request of Mr. Arthur Humans to defer his 2019 real estate taxes pursuant to state statute 12-124 and 12-124A and city council policy adopted 10-21-1991. So I pulled the cam because I plan on not supporting this tonight. I did make a phone call to the Director of Finance, and I've never, I've never seen this on the council agenda before, and I found out a couple of things. One, this is, this policy is from 1991, it is a state statute. Mr. Human is asking for deferment on his property taxes, and this is the fourth time in a row that this has happened. There's only two other times besides Mr. Humans' request that we've ever had this go on record, and that was for a property that was granted by the city council in 2016, and another time, I'm sorry, 2013, and another time it was granted in 2016, 17, and 18. Other than that, there's not a record of it, and I think that, a couple of things I want to say, is I reviewed the abatement policy, it's a very old policy, in the sense that, you know, I'm big on the administration's policies and procedures being up to date. I mean, if anything, these need to be reviewed, I understand it's a state statute, but looking over this, I would say thousands of people can qualify for this. It basically says in the verbiage, if you're poor and you can't afford your property taxes, that you can apply 30 days prior to when they're due, and you, it has to go through council, and it can be approved or denied. Number one, I don't think a lot of people know about this, and number two, I think that I understand if individuals have hardships, and we need to look at those, and I think it's appropriate in, under certain circumstances, especially now with COVID, that we would give a deferment, but the fact that this is four years in a row is a red flag for me, and I'll tell you why. If individuals cannot pay their property taxes, and one of the requirements is that they have, and I'll read it out loud, is that they have no liens or mortgages in excess of the assessed value property. You know what that means? It means that they have equity in that house. And so I would say that a person who's having a hardship and has equity in their home would sell their home and downgrade and pay their property taxes. I think that that's a normal, that would be a normal financial decision, but to say that I'm going to keep my house and I'm going to keep the equity in it, and I'm just going to defer, and the only time that the city is going to collect money from this is if the person dies, or upon their death, the home is sold. So what I don't want is to set a precedent on this kind of financial deferment, because the city of New London is not a bank. I want to be kind of frank about that, and so I don't think it's appropriate, and I'm going to stop there, and I'm going to thank the Director of Finance for sending me all the information that I requested this morning, and I'm going to stop right there.
Okay, thank you, President Protemp Nartartas, this is President Dominguez. Any other counselor that wishes to speak on this 8.3? All right, if none, let me, let me, let me, I'll go before you, Councilor Burke, hold on, let me just say a couple of things. I understand that this has happened in the past, you know, I'm just looking at it, you know. I guess what I can say to you, first of all, this man is a six-year-old man, you know, he does live there, he's been living there for, you know, so many years, he's ill, he was, he has some head trauma, he injured himself, he collects social security. I mean, he knows about this. He knows about that this is, this is something that's a possibility to, according to the state statute, that can be done. I mean, I understand about having equity in his home, I mean, he is, he doesn't name any other family, he doesn't have any relatives, he lives by himself, he's not married, no one else lives in that apartment or in that, in that house with him. I mean, if he sells his house, where's he going to go? I mean, I mean, that's my thing, and these are not questions for you to answer, I'm just thinking out loud. He loves to live in New London, you know what I mean? And again, you know, whether he dies, or, you know, we're going to get this money back, so I just don't see myself, I mean, I understand about, you know, about financially deferring and everything, but I just, I just can't see myself not giving him an opportunity, you know, in the sense that, you know what, no one else has come to us, and I've been in this council for the past seven years, and he's the only one that I've known, that I know that has asked for this, so with that said, I'm not, I'm not going to be, I'm going to support this to give him an opportunity. So I'll have Councilor Burke speak.
President Dominguez, I just want to give a quick opportunity, just because you did refer to some of my questions, and I apologize for being out of order, but there, let's just get this straight, there are lots of poor people in New London, and there are hundreds, if not thousands, of people in New London that would benefit from this, and the reason that we are not getting bombarded with these requests is because they don't know about it. That is the reason.
No, and so, point well taken, if I may speak, thank you, President, and I understand, I'm with you. So, so the issue here is that the city is not educating the people on that. Is that it? I mean, there's no other way, I mean, how would you find out stuff? I mean.
I don't, I don't think it's about education, I think that this is an old policy that needs to be looked at, I don't think it's appropriate, and I'll let the Director of Finance weigh into this, I mean, I had a conversation with him earlier, you know, it's a policy from 1991, it's a loophole that only a handful of people know about and are applying for this. It is up to the council to stop it right here and say, no, we're not going to support this kind of financial deferment, or we're going to allow these, if we make an exception for one person, who's to say next year, we're not going to get a hundred of these? That's what I mean by precedent.
No, and I understand, and President Protemp, I understand what you're saying, but he's the only one that has come up, you know what I mean? So before we continue with that, let me just allow, first of all, Councilor Burke to speak first. Thank you.
Thank you, President Dominguez, I did have some just questions for the Finance Director, but I will defer if what President Protemp Nartartas wants to allow him to provide some backup information, that might be helpful to me as well, so I will defer.
Okay, okay, Director of Finance is your answer. Can yours?
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Now we can't hear.
Okay, this is Dave McBride, Director of Finance. I'm not sure of the specifics that you're looking for, I tried to provide you as much information later today to all the councilors, hopefully you had some time to review the information. A couple of the pieces I just want to bring forward is, one of the key principles is the 8% factor, the individual, the annual taxes must exceed 8% of household income, and another reason why many individuals would not be able to apply is there would be no liens on the property, that's another requirement, so just, you know, that would probably weed down a lot of individual requests. But I do understand the Councilor Nartartas' point, in that there are other options available for people, if you do not have a lien on your property. If you do not have a lien on your property, we all know there's other avenues to receive funding. You know, reverse mortgages are popular now. Lines of credit you can do. So there are other avenues for individuals to properly pay their taxes. Also want to point out that the city, in effect, is also charging this individual 6%. So the city is receiving interest on that deferment as well. So there's, there's positives, negatives to both sides. Ultimately, it's your decision. You can foresee more people as this becomes more available. You probably will receive more applications in the future. I think that's probably safe to assume in the current environment. But it's ultimately your decision. You know, this individual clearly has provided documents and documents explaining his situation and how dire it is and the need to do this, or else we would, in effect, you know, potentially, if he doesn't have some assistance, you know, we're gonna put him, you know, we're gonna have to, you know, put him, you know, move from his house, and I don't think that's what we want. But there could be a mechanism where maybe situations like this going forward, we addressed earlier and provide some guidance, such as working with bankers to get reverse mortgages, because there's certainly financial matters that can be taken into consideration that wouldn't allow this to come to the City Council in the future, where they could get funding and do it that way, as you know others do. So kind of torn on this one, but I do think there's other avenues if you were to choose not to do this, or maybe allow this one, and then in the future to work with other city residents who are in these situations to make sure they're not, you know, removing their house and they're still able to move on with their life. So that's kind of the, you know, the summary that I'd like to provide.
Okay, thank you very much, Director Finances McBride. Let me go over to, this is President Dominguez speaking. We'll go to Counselor Sadi.
Counselor Sadi speaking. Again, I appreciate all the comments. At some point in time, though, this council has to be compassionate. This individual has applied and met the criteria. I don't care if the policy is 1991, 81, or 61. There's some laws that have been on the books for hundreds and hundreds of years. Anyways, I plan on being compassionate this evening, and I plan on voting in favor of this deferment request.
This is President Dominguez speaking. Thank you, Counselor Sadi. I think I saw Counselor Burke. Did you want to chime in?
Yes, this is Counselor Burke. Thank you, Mr. President. Just quickly, you know, as a freshman counselor, this is my first time going through one of these requests. So just to clarify, I don't know if perhaps the, either Director Landrigan or Director McBride would be able to answer this. So does the state statute reference mandate that municipalities offer this program, or simply give municipalities the option to offer this program?
My, this is Director McBride. My understanding is the option to abate taxes, but Attorney Landrigan may have better information than I do.
No, this is Attorney Jeffrey Landrigan, and yes, I would agree that this is completely discretionary for the City Council to consider it. Whether you get one application or 100 applications, you take every application on its own and determine whether or not there is a hardship. And even if there is a hardship, determine whether or not you want to provide the relief requested.
Understood. Thank you very much. And to Director McBride, I believe you sort of touched on this in previous answers, but with the, with the deferment that, you know, COVID-related deferment that we're offering taxpayers as a whole, would any portion of this be, I know it speaks of interest, or would any portion of that interest be suspended like all other interests, which is suspended during the times of COVID deferment?
Some of that would be applicable here, but it would only be three months, and he's asking for the full year. So there would be a little bit reprieve, you know, a quarter in essence of the interest.
Thank you. No other questions. It's just a comment that I also do plan on supporting this tonight. However, I agree with many of the concerns President Protemnartatas has brought up. And, you know, perhaps in, seeing that it's, the state statute doesn't mandate it, but only requires us, maybe, you know, we should take a look at that, that policy going forward. So thank you very much. Nothing further.
President Dominguez speaking. Thank you, Counselor Burke. Any other counselor? Counselor Dice, Counselor Booker Jr., or Counselor Goodwin, anyone else that wants to chime in and say something? Or, okay, Counselor Dice, go ahead.
Thank you, President Dominguez. And this is Counselor Dice. I have never ran across something like this, where this man exposed his whole life and said, "Look, I was injured, and I'm hurting, and I need help." And I, with that being said, I was just shocked to read all that, and then with everything going on tonight, I will make sure that I have compassion and support it. But I do know that we do need to look at it, the statute, and update and making sure. But it was just, it just tore me up a little bit, you know, how he just laid everything out. Thank you, President Dominguez, to this Counselor Dice.
President Dominguez speaking. Thank you, Counselor Dice. Counselor Booker Jr., did you?
Yes, I just want to, through you, President Dominguez, to Director McBride. I just want to also thank President Protemnartatas for addressing some of the concerns about, you know, the issues that we have, that we would definitely face in the future. President, Finance Director McBride, can you, you mentioned some of the, the options that may, that we may have. Can you, can you shed light on some of the options that we probably, that this individual, I mean, that we could probably provide maybe in the, in the future? Suggestions that you, that you addressed?
Certainly, this is Director McBride. The most common form of financial utilization for this type of situation would be a reverse mortgage. A lot of your, your older individuals who have, who have paid off their house and they have significant assets or real estate, that's usually the typical route where older individuals would take a reverse mortgage out. And in essence, what they would do is, if the value of their houses were $200,000 and it's all paid off, they would draw down some of the equity of that house and use it for paying off their taxes, for common, you know, common household items and so forth, and that would become their income, and they would use that. And then they would draw some of that down over time, and that would carry, carry their lifestyle without enough income. It does reduce the value of the house, obviously, and at some point, you know, it's a matter of time until the house becomes under, you know, if it goes from 200 to 150 to 125, the value of the house is decreased. But they're using some of their house value that they built up over time in order to provide for their daily living needs.
Thank you very much, Finance Director McBride. Through you, President Dominguez, to Attorney Landrigan. When, when it comes to this policy that, that is, is within our guidelines, within our charter, is it, what would be some of the procedures we would have to work through in order to make some changes?
Changes in, in what respect? To this policy?
Correct.
This is not anything that's in the charter. This is simply an ordinance. So, so, and, and the ordinance is just adopting the state statute that really lays out the, the terms and conditions for how a person apply or qualifies for this, for this particular tax abatement agreement that, that the legislative body of a municipality can adopt.
Thank you very much for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Counselor Booker. At this time, is there any other counselor? Okay, go ahead, President, President Protemnartatas, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, President Dominguez. So I'm just gonna have the last word, because I did pull this, and I, and I do plan on not voting in favor of this. And, you know, I, I want to just make a comment or rebuttal to the word compassionate, as if I'm not a compassionate counselor. And I'm gonna tell you that, to me, when I look at this, you know what I see? I see inconsistency. I see inequality. Because if you go to Mohegan or you, or you go to Huntington and you interview some of those individuals, they would tell you, "Yeah, the house became too much. Yeah, I couldn't keep up with the payments. Yeah, I couldn't pay the taxes on that home," and that's how they got there. So this is about making it an equal playing field for those, those, those individuals that live in our city that know nothing about, about this deferment. And I really think that this council, the reason that it's coming to this council is because we have to think about these things, about whether or not we want to set, once again, this kind of trend moving forward. And who's to say next year, we don't get a dozen of these? And what are we gonna say? "No, sorry, it's too much at this point?" That's unfair. So if you're gonna, if you're gonna approve this, then we need to approve it for everybody that applies, unless the policy, policy has changed. That is my position.
And thank you, this is, thank you, President Protemnartatas. That was going to be, because I know you wanted the last word, but I was gonna tell you. If, if that's what you want to do, then I suggest that you work along with Attorney Landrigan and change those policies, so we don't have that in the future. But for now, you know, you know, it's, it's, it's just, it is what it is for now, but I understand the future's gonna, it's, it's gonna create a lot of problems for us because of this. So I recommend that you do that. I recommend that you speak to Attorney Landrigan and see if we can make some policy changes there, and then we don't have to worry about that. So you'll fix that for us. So thank you. All right, so at this time, seeing no others, let's, we're gonna go right into voting on this 8.3 cam. All right, so again, if everybody turns on their TV lamp there, I can just, we can just raise our hands. So all those in favor, raise your hands, and I can count them, so.
Aye.
All right, so we got six, six yeses, and those oppose, and we have one no, okay? So the motion carries. Thank you. Great discussion, everybody. Okay, so at this time, we're gonna move to 8.4. That's Counselor Sadi.
Move the cam.
Second, Counselor Burke.
Thank you.
The City Council authorized Perkins Eastman Artas proceed with schematic design efforts associated with the replacement of the existing Board of Education in the amount of $115,000. I plan on voting against this motion. I will state what I have stated in the past. The voters voted for a bond of $50 million to rebuild the Benny Dover Jackson Middle School for the children. The voters did not vote to spend additional money on Boards of Education building. The amount of money that is being asked, although this here is just for schematic design, 115,000, the backup will show that the total package is 570,000, 580,000. Way out of whack with what, what the architectures fees are for the $50 million project. If, if in fact, this was somewhere around 200,000, I think it would be money still poorly spent. I just want to very quickly remind everybody that we are in a huge hole with value engineering at New London High School, and in fact, we're supposed to have a meeting this Friday. What they've done is they've lopped off important parts of the New London High School, the North Campus, because there isn't enough money available. There isn't enough money available because we spent the money elsewhere. And we're doing the exact same thing, and I would hope that we do not go down the same path. If all is said and done, and the Colliers can prove to us beyond a reasonable doubt that there's gonna be more than enough money in this budget at the end, so be it. That would be after full construction documents are done. At this juncture, if we do this, all we're doing is hurting ourselves. So again, I hope everybody understands that. I've heard, I know you've heard from me in the past. I know you voted against me in the past. Again, the, the figures have never changed. Yes, the dollar figure right now is 115 as opposed to 570. That's because it's about one quarter of what the cost is going to be. But again, thank you for your time, and hopefully some other people will join me in supporting the children and voting against this, this endeavor at this time. Thank you.
President Dominguez speaking. Thank you, Counselor Sadi. At this time, I'm going to go with Counselor Burke. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, President Dominguez, and not to, as Counselor Sadi pointed out, rehash the same sort of argument that we had a couple of weeks, a couple of months ago related to this. So I'll just have one brief statement to summarize my belief then, that remains true to today, that leaving central office as is with the remainder of the Benny Dover Jackson Middle School project going forward, I think leaves an incredible liability on our school system. You know, it's gonna be less environmentally, environmentally efficient, and it's going to take building maintenance dollars that will be continually needed into that building that could be spent maintaining these new, these brand-new schools, as well as, you know, the last schools we built, which are somewhere, I'm go, already starting to be getting to show age. So with that, perhaps if we could, through you, Mr. President, to Chuck Warrington, our owner's rep, if we could perhaps just give us a summary of, you know, what the schematic designs, cam that's in front of us, and what, should it be approved? What next steps forward will be to be able to design a central office building within the existing budget for the Benny Dover Jackson Middle School project?
Good evening, Chuck Warrington with Colliers Project Leaders in response to Counselor Burke. So the, the motion tonight is to move forward. We've discussed this endeavor a couple of times already. And basically, what is to allow is to allow the design team to develop the plans more in depth to a higher level of detail than what we had in the past. And I think many maybe have seen a conceptual plan that took a certain amount of hours, but this plan allows us to move forward and further develop, come up with a specific floor plan, some elevations, and do some more detailed cost estimating that we cannot do without the schematic design level. We need to be able to develop it further in order to give you better information as to what you can afford and whether to move forward. These are always, these projects always go in steps. They're always a process. We don't go from step one to say, to the final step, say, step 10, or A to Z. We, we go in steps, and this first step is, again, to get us to a point where we can give the School Maintenance and Building Committee and City of New London as a whole more defined, detailed information. And, and at the completion of the schematic design, which would be approximately end of July timeframe, coincidental with our, the estimating for the Benny Dover project, we're gonna be receiving what they call 90% construction documents tomorrow morning from Perkins Eastman, and that's on schedule. We'll be estimating the main project as well as developing needs, and at the end of July, we'll know where we stand with the main project. At design development, the last phase, we're, we're on, our estimate shows us being on budget. That didn't happen by accident. That's a result of proactive management of the budget, the programmatic needs, the educational specifications, and the process that our team is used to, to manage your project and with the Building Committee. So at the end of July, we'll have both of these answers and kind of know where we stand moving forward, and we can, again, educate the city better to make that decision once that time comes. So I hope I answered your question, Counselor Burke.
This is Counselor Burke. Thank you so much, Chuck. I think that was a solid explanation. I will defer any other questions until after other counselors have had a chance. Thank you, President Dominguez.
President Dominguez speaking. Thank you, Counselor Burke. Is there any other counselor that would like to speak on this item? Okay, is that okay, counselor? Go ahead, Counselor Goodwin, and then I'll go to Counselor Sadi. Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. President, to Mr. Warrington. So I, I have some questions with regards to the schematic design. So on last calls that I was on and, and prior times you guys came to council, this, the fees for this design have gone down. Is that correct?
Yes, and speaking with Perkins Eastman, we understand the stress and the concerns on the budget. And in an effort to move this thing forward for the city, Perkins Eastman has agreed to, to lower their fee by about $23,000 to try to move this forward. We know it's been a difficult discussion within the city, but yes, it's lowered by 23,000.
And that's a perfect word, to move it forward. So what is the end goal? So we're paying, what is it, $100,000 or so for this design? This design's ultimate goal is to achieve what?
So the completion of schematic design, because the big question is, I, I think Counselor Sadi asks is, how can the city be assured that moving forward, that you can afford it, and you're not gonna run out of money? And I think some comparison has been made to the north, to the North Campus and some of the challenges that have been occurring over there with having to cut program and cut items out of that final design. in some of the challenges that have been occurring over there with having to cut program and cut items out of that final design?
Correct my apologies to be fair to the process that the council president has set and I only get two questions let me just reiterate. So what I what I'm referring to is so the state came in and said we need to build X. We we already decided with the Board of Ed's approval that we should build that we should build W. X and W are two different things so now we're paying a hundred a hundred thousand dollars to get to achieve what to achieve which? Are we arguing that our stance on the square footage is necessary and trying to convince the state otherwise? And or are we building what the state state is telling us that we have to have which I I'm referring to I think is a ten thousand square footage that they have mandated that we should have?
Yeah so since our previous meetings we have met with the state multiple multiple other times and there is an agreement a verbal agreement in which O S C G R ourselves Perkins Eastman I believe Mayor Passer was on and David McBride where there's an agreement that the total budget is five point five million and that we we estimate that within that budget we can afford approximately eighty three eighty five hundred square feet and that's what we want to fine tune is what exactly can we afford based upon how we're gonna build it? The 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 city the state said they're fine with that and they also confirmed with Kate McCoy from Board of Ed that yes they would find areas to put some of the other spaces within the district. So there's agreement between my understanding is between the city and the state to move forward with the current plan of a five point five million total dollar budget and to reduce the square footage into that eighty three to eighty five hundred square feet we want to try to maximize that square footage.
And that plan is in writing or is that a verbal agreement because from what I was told we needed to meet that ten thousand square footage so I'm a little confused. If I remember from that 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 call it was said that we didn't need this this perplexed idea of the schematic design. We could just do something more brief to satisfy their requirements or their needs if you will. So I'm just confused as to what this a hundred thousand dollars accomplishes.
Yeah so there's been a couple meetings since probably those discussions I understand what you're saying so in the initial in the initial discussion the state all they wanted to see was a conceptual plan to kind of get an idea how big it would be where it'd be located in the site so that they can give us feedback give the city feedback on whether they would participate and what would they would be investing in. Subsequent to that Perkins Eastman on their own dime on their own dollars developed that plan and once they did we did meet with the state to discuss that plan and to and to talk about it more in depth. And so that's kind of where we're at now and ultimately the the there is an agreement between a verbal agreement between the city and the state that yes we're gonna move forward with a slightly lower square footage plan with a total budget of five point five million. So that that discussion happened probably since our next meeting and we haven't reported since on that. And so here we are now in order to go to the proceed any further we need to release the design team to actually start designing. We already have the conceptual plan we know what the idea is the only or the next step is to start the design process and we thought that in lieu of approving their entire proposal let's go step by step let's start with the first step of schematic design estimate it and then go okay where are we at and then we'll bring it back to I'll say the city's a whole school maintenance and building committee city council so this is where we're at would you like us to proceed to the what they call the construction document phase and to go out to bid so there's been some since the last discussion there has been discussions with the state subsequent to that.
Council President that was my two questions.
Okay thank you Counselor Goodwin for that at this time is there anybody else? Okay seeing none let's go to Councilor Sadi Councilor Sadi you have the last.
Through you Council President to Mr. Warrington. Mr. Warrington you stated earlier that Perkins Eastman has agreed to reduce their fees. And again the fee now for conceptual design is one hundred fifteen thousand which is much less than the five hundred and seventy three thousand that we were talking about in the past but in the backup on eight point four page three and I asked counselors to turn their attention to that. We we have a document here which has not changed is still dated March tenth and the amount is one five hundred fifty three thousand six hundred fifty four and that optional new fire pump design is another twenty thousand for a total of five hundred seventy three thousand so where exactly are we seeing any any type of savings whatsoever if this plan continues to move forward?
So if I could I'm gonna share my screen so that we can all I don't know if I could be enabled to share a screen but I'll describe it the bottom of page four of your of your agenda packet.
Mr. Warrington excuse me this is President Dominguez excuse me I I think I think you're able to do that let me ask the IT Dan you can he do that?
He enabled me yes.
Okay yes because I'd rather have you speak and have it in front of us it's better. Thank you sir.
Let me just make sure I'm sharing the correct screen for us all. And this is in your packets but I figured might be easier for me to point so can you see the the page five here in the Perkins Eastman?
Yes.
So I'm gonna I'm gonna try to blow this up a little bit further. So in the original proposal and we thought it's important to include the original proposal. Yes the total for the comprehensive services that include design bidding phase services during construction which is review of construction document a review of shop drawings doing inspections in the field RFIs etcetera per their basic contract design of technology and design of furniture that the original toll is five hundred fifty three thousand six hundred fifty four. The breakout for that base fee is slightly below it and you'll see schematic design phase one hundred thirty eight thousand four hundred fourteen. That number's been reduced to one hundred and fifteen in the effort of moving this thing forward. Perkins you know as well as Colliers we want to be a partner with the city and and do whatever we can do to move it forward but there's efforts involved to do that. This is a complicated small project the remaining costs you see construction documents phase which with this approval should you approve it tonight? We need approval to go any further than this phase so the remaining phase would be approximately two hundred twenty seven thousand to finalize the construction documents to go to bid. Actual bidding phase that that constitutes multiple efforts. The construction administration phase one hundred fifty five thousand and then project closeout is minimal so there's five fifty three. The fire pump design it that's an optional fire pump design and one of our goals in once we get into the design and we won't know until we do is can we keep the fire pump because that fire pump serves both buildings right now it serves the current central office and it serves Benny Dover. We're gonna try to keep it in its location and not have to relocate it but until we get into the design we can't answer that question so this is an optional new fire pump or someone says hey move it into the building give us a new one that's what it would cost so that's in in excess of that so the savings again is in the schematic design line item all the rest will remain the same in the proposal should you move forward.
And Mr. Warrington you have that in writing that'll be one fifteen as opposed to one thirty eight?
Yes if you I'm gonna scroll back up to page one.
Right Tuesday May twenty six I now see that yeah.
Yeah this is an email from Joe Costa and I think Joe is on the call I believe as well principal with Perkins because this was in reaction we're trying to respond quickly as a result and you can see that it says that it's reduced to one fifteen from the one thirty eight there and I and then you can read the rest of the letter the rest is self explanatory I believe.
And if we spend this hundred fifteen thou or vote to approve spending of this hundred fifteen thousand can you assure us that this project will definitely move forward?
Well it it's a step by step Councilor Sadi the first step is to complete schematic design and estimate it and you know with the floor plan and see where it lies and and you know I don't have a crystal ball I'm not gonna make guarantees you know in the future none of us can do that but we understand what our budget is and the design team is going to design with the budget in mind and when they start thinking about their structural systems the building envelope the exterior the windows the roof this is gonna have to be a very efficient building so we want to estimate it and if we're close within our budget we would come back to you and say yes we think we should move forward with it and let's proceed to final construction documents now the one recommendation that we've made is when we bid this out is to bid it as an add alternate so that one we see what the the exact costs are for this portion of the project it's not gonna be lump summed into the main project number one but then also the option so that we can manage the budget in throughout construction because a lot of things are gonna happen in the life of a project as you've seen already in many projects that are unforeseen and that's what you have an owner's contingency for. So to guarantee absolutely I I can't say that in earnest with a degree or high degree of integrity. Alls I can say is we're gonna manage it to the budget and manage manage the program.
Final question has this reduction been passed and voted in favor by the School Building Maintenance Committee South Campus?
The reduction hasn't been approved but this full the full amount of the five hundred fifty three thousand was approved I believe on March thirtieth if I remember the date. So this is just a reduction I don't know if we'd have to bring it back to them to approve it.
This is John Sadi thank you Council President Dominguez and Mr. Warrington for your time.
President Dominguez speaking thank you Council Sadi and thank you Mr. Warrington also. Not sure I don't think I see any other counselor that has any questions we're gonna move on to vote on remember this is eight point four okay so again please if you are in favor of it okay please raise your hands so I can count so one two three four those in favor five six okay so we have six in favor those oppose? Alright Sadi okay or nothing okay so it moves passes six to one thank you very much thank you guys.
Thank you.
Counselors thank you Mr. Warrington alright so we'll move on to eight point five that's Mr. Booker Councilor Booker Junior you're on sir.
Eight point five O P E B appropriations move the cam.
Can I get a second? Thank you thank you.
A transfer resolution the City Council approves resolution zero six one five two zero dash zero two transferring funds in the amount of twenty six thousand eight hundred from line one zero four one one seven zero three dash five three zero one two assessment of consulting to line one zero nine nine zero one zero one dash five nine zero seven two operating transfer out transfer in the to O P E B to transfer funds necessary to satisfy Milliman invoices to the appropriate line. Through President Dominguez Junior to Finance Director McBride. For the residents can you clarify why there's a audit performed every two years?
Yep this is Director McBride we just to clarify we do perform financial audits every year of all of the city's financial funds. However I think you're referring to the two years for the Milliman actual valuation. This may take a few minutes but I think it's important everybody understands because I think what you're asking is important. First of all this this appropriation is to require.
Can you just can you just speak up just a little bit more please?
Yeah certainly can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah so this appropriation I'll try to go through this quickly this appropriation is to pay for the consulting bill for them to come out and do evaluation of the city's O P E B plan. As you know the city has two components of its financial statements that are that are very important to bondholders very important to residents. They are the O P E B valuation which is the value on your books of about twenty six million dollars of liabilities that are owed to past retirees for health and dental there's also the valuation of the pensions as well this particular money was used to pay for the consultants to do the valuation of the O P E B benefits. The reason it's important to be done it is to to make sure your financial statements are accurate but more important they come up with the valuation that you need to pay your retirees for the next twenty thirty forty years. In order to come up with that valuation number in addition to coming up with that valuation of what they expect to pay they then come up with what's called an ADEC which is an actuarial determined employer contribution figure which is the number that they want you to provide every year into that liability account in order to properly fund your pension and your O P E B liability obligations. So that's what this consultant does. Once you know years ago they didn't do it every two years they did every three or four years but as things have progressed financially better for the city you're now funding that ADEC at a higher proportion higher percentage of the what they're recommending. That's impacting your bond you know your bond rating positively it's impacting your financial statements positively. So it's important we do it every two years it was not it was not budgeted for in two thousand twenty as a result of being done every several years we will be budgeting for this every two years going forward to make sure this valuation is determined as well as the ADEC determination to make sure we're properly budgeting the proper amounts to get up to the point where funding those liabilities so we're properly taking care of the needs of the city and not running into situations that I'm sure you hear about throughout the state and the country where people aren't funding their their liability so that's the purpose for the consulting you know the twenty six thousand dollars consulting fee is to in order to properly estimate those amounts so hopefully that explained your your question.
Thank you very much and through you President Dominguez Junior back to David McBride. Can you also on eight point five page four can you just clarify for the residents under basic services G A S B seventy four seventy five disclosures for fiscal year twenty nineteen the three thousand five hundred dollars just for clarification on that in case they have any concerns or questions because I had a few emails about that as well.
Certainly yeah G A S B seventy four seventy five stands for the Government Accounting Standings Board number seventy four and seventy five and G A S B is the the government organization that that oversees all the mandates that are required to make sure you're doing your accounting correctly. This is for governmental accounting. Excuse me so they put forth certain rules and regulations that you must follow in order to be in compliant with proper financial reporting. This particular one seventy four seventy five focused specifically on the O P E B valuation that I was speaking about earlier. They charge you thirty five hundred dollars to make sure you know you're doing things properly so it's making sure we're in conformity with G A S B seventy four seventy five.
Thank you very much Finance Director McBride I have no further questions at this point.
You're welcome.
This is President Dominguez speaking thank you Counselor Booker at this time I've seen no others that want to chime in I'm gonna call on to vote alright so we're voting for eight point five. A and B.
Nope just A.
Okay just oh just A my fault just A alright. So again have your TVs on here and all those in favor raise your hands for eight point five. So one two three four five six I think it's I think it's seven it's alright seven okay seven and.
Let me put my let me put my hand down then.
Okay is that wait are you you waiting to watch him? He did he's he's seven he's on alright alright Sadi alright so seven seven yes okay. Okay so that cam passes alright let's go now to the next one there which is B part go ahead Booker Councilor Booker.
Or B ordinance zero six dash fifteen dash twenty dash zero one move the cam.
Second Councilor Sadi.
Okay thank you cam the City Council approves ordinance six dash fifteen dash twenty dash zero one in amount of twenty six thousand eight hundred made from a operating transfer and then from the general funds one zero zero five for the purpose of providing funding to pay for the actual valuation provided by Milliman. The ordinance is given its first and second readings in the process of passage by title only all counselors having copies and the third reading of the subject ordinance is adopted by roll call vote. I don't have any questions at this moment concerning this cam.
Okay thank you.
Council Sadi has a question.
Yep good thank you Counselor Booker this is President Dominguez okay we'll start with Counselor Sadi.
Thank you Council President Dominguez through you this is Councilor Sadi to Budget Director McBride. In the backup it talks about paying an invoice for Milliman. Does that mean we've already? Um, in the backup, it talks about paying an invoice for Milliman. Does that mean we've already spent this money?
No, we have not. That's the reason for this appropriation is to provide them the payment.
I have no further questions. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. President Dominguez speaking. Thank you, Councilor Sadi. Any other councillor? Okay, seeing none. All right, we'll do, we'll go and vote again. Again, all those in favor, just raise your hand.
Roll, roll, roll.
Oh, this is, is this one a roll call vote?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, it is. I'm just getting used to this. Oh, raise your hand. All right, so let's do this one. Roll call vote. I was on the road, but let's go. All right, see the card. Ayala, go ahead.
Okay. Councillor Booker Junior.
Yes.
Councillor Dice.
Yes.
Councillor Goodwin.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, he said.
Councillor Burke.
Yes.
President Protemp Natares.
Yes.
Councillor Sadi.
Yes.
President Dominguez.
That's a yes, sir.
Seven yes.
All right, thank you. The motion carries. I think we're a little higher here, but we we just got a couple more to go, all right, guys? I see people yawning. I see people stretching. And those that have the cameras on, anyways. All right, uh, let's go to uh, now this is eight point six. That is uh, Councilor Burke, please, sir.
Move the cam.
Second.
Second, Rihanna Day.
All right, it's been seconded by Councillor Sadi. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, this is Councilor Burke. The city council hereby approved the extension of contract for paving services by J H Lynch Company in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the calendar year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty. The original contract was signed in twenty eighteen and allowed renewal of the bid price mutually agreed by the city and J H Lynch. The council hereby authorizes the mayor to sign and execute the extended contract. Um, Council President through you to um Director Seer and or um or if it's more appropriate to Director McBride, but um Director Seer, if you could just give us some input on um how this uh how this cam missed our, the initial jet uh agenda deadline?
Yeah, I think, I think.
Yeah, let me, look, I'll, if it's okay, I'll, Director McBride will take this one.
Go ahead, sir.
We are, finance is trying to do as as great of a job as we can, making sure we're following proper procedures, making sure we're not, you know, paying bills on time and, you know, everything's in the right buckets. Uh, in with in Director uh Seer's defense, uh, he waited until the proper appropriation of the bond funding came due, waited thirty days, you know, that that the requirement in order to not incur those funds. Uh, he on May thirteenth uh submitted to uh myself um a request to have this on the agenda. I think it was from the June first agenda. I uh worked with Donna Reinhardt on putting together the proposal to put it on the agenda. Uh, there was a little confusion, and I, you know, I'll be honest, uh somewhat new to the whole cam appropriation um setup, so a little confusing. Uh, so it's really finances uh issue with not putting this on the June first agenda. We got confused between the cam and the appropriation, or I got confused. Uh, there was an, there was a misunderstanding in terms of whether or not this was going to be an appropriation or simply a cam. Uh, therefore, it did not go on the agenda. It did not uh need to be an appropriation. It only needed to be a cam because the money was previously appropriated for. Uh, this money is not any new money uh that that hasn't been approved previously. Uh, it has nothing to do with the new appropriation request of funding. Uh, the money has been available, is available. Uh, the purpose of this was only to put a cam on the agenda, which was an extension of the contract from two thousand eighteen that the council approved, uh further approved in two thousand nineteen in order to move forward. So this has to stay in finance in terms of the appropriation. So uh that's why this delay was mixed. And and of course, the urgency is, as everyone has uh indicated, was trying to get in there uh prior to the July fourth weekend, the summertime to get some of the sidewalk done. So uh finance will take the hit on this one, but that's where we are.
This is Councilor Burke. Thank you so very much for your response to that, Director McBride. I appreciate your due diligence. Uh, we're all human. Things happen. I will correct you. We're talking about roads, not sidewalks here, though. Um, so uh to um uh to Director Seer, um, you know, should we approve this tonight? Can you give me uh just a a summary of um how of the the department's um plan for prioritizing um uh asphalt um, you know, repaving of roads this construction season?
Yes, sure. This is uh Director Brian Seer. Um, we initially planned to address um a couple of areas that are in dire need of uh of attention. Um, those currently are Converse Place, um, the road that parallels Fair Harbor across from the hospital where there's a number of doctor's offices is in uh very poor shape. And uh we've had a lot of um resident concerns, complaints, if you will, of the Water Street section as you leave the city um toward Crystal Avenue away from the police station. Um, there's a lot of washboarding, and it's very rough there. We plan to address that. Um, in addition to that, we do have, you might be aware, that we've enforced um recently, starting last fall, that wherever there is um a utility trench in any of the city streets installed, uh that when that is permanently repaired, that not just the trench is replaced, but that the area where the trench is located is uh new pavement all the way from the center line of the road to the curb. And that's a new policy, and that's one we're holding to. There's been a significant amount of work, uh utility work done in the Ashcraft, Elm Street, South Ledger, Lincoln Rogers, uh Cedar Grove area that will be um restored from the center line over to where the uh uh utility trenches were. And our plan is to try to piggyback with those areas and result in totally paved roads uh going forward. So that seems to be the most advantageous use of those um of those funds um in that neighborhood. And uh we do have a list of priorities throughout the city in terms of uh, you know, pavement quality that we do reference at times, but we're also open to kind of an organic process where any concerns residents have currently, we do try to address those as well. So um that's pretty much our game plan. And as we've done in previous years, should we spend that two hundred fifty thousand dollars, you know, very effectively, and there'll be enough time left in the fall for weather and possible additional uh paving, provided there's funds in the infrastructure uh program, we possibly couldn't could come back and request additional funds for additional paving. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Seer. Uh, that was my two questions, so um I'll uh refrain from any more. Thank you very much, President Dominguez.
Thank you. This is President Dominguez. Thank you, Councilor Burke. Uh, at this time, is there any other councillor that wishes to speak on this item before we vote? Okay, all right, seeing none. You know what? We're going to go right into vote, and this one is not a uh roll call vote, all right, guys? So we'll do the whole thing with raising our hands uh for the vote, all right? Uh, let's go. All those in favor for eight point six, raise your hands. Oh, say aye, okay. All right, I see everyone. Yep, all right, seven voted. Uh, those opposed? All right, so motion carries, seven.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. All right, uh, Councillor Sadi.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, is there a second? All right, there's a second uh from Councillor Dice uh before we vote up. Uh, well, no, let's go. We gotta, we gotta vote. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Nope. All right, so guys, good night. Everybody take rest, and uh we'll see you guys tomorrow evening, okay?
Six o'clock.
Yes, yes, six o'clock. Good night. Good night, everybody.